Okay, we're recording.
Thank you. Good evening. Good evening. It's October 20th, 2025. This is a regular meeting of the Amherst Town Council. Chapter two of the Acts of 2025 extended through June 30th, 2027, the ability of public bodies to meet in a fully remote or hybrid manner. This allows us to continue to hold meetings remotely without a quorum of the council physically present in the meeting room. However, this meeting is hybrid and is available in real time by Zoom, by phone, and is live broadcast on Amherst Media Channel 9 and livestream. There are eight councillors in the room, and there are total, at this time, 11 councillors present. Please be advised that this meeting is being held in person and that the remote access option is provided as a courtesy only. In the event of a technology issue with a remote connection, the meeting will continue in person as scheduled as long as there is a quorum of the council in the room or available by technological means to continue the meeting. Given that we have a quorum of the council present, I'm calling the October 20th regular meeting of the town council to order at 6:31. I'll call on each councillor by the name they have indicated they would like to be addressed and ask them to unmute their mics and then mute them again. Pat DeAngelis.
Present.
Anna Devlin-Gothier.
Present.
Councillor Ette.
Present.
Lynn Griesmer is present. Councillor Hanke.
Present.
Bob Hegner.
Present.
Councillor Lord.
Present.
Pam Rooney is absent. Councillor Ryan.
Present.
Cathy Shane.
I'm here.
Andy Steinberg.
Present.
Jennifer Taub.
I'm here.
Councillor Walker.
Here.
Please let me correct. There are actually 12 councillors present tonight. There is no chatroom for this meeting. If councillors have technical issues, please let Athena and me know. And to make a comment, please use the raised hand button. For those of you that are here to make general public comment or to comment with regard to the hearing, please make sure that if you're in the town room with us, you have signed up. There are two hearings tonight. One is specific to the EverSource petition. The other one is general public comment. I'm going to ask that we show the announcements, and they're on the screen. I just want to point out that we have two council meetings coming up on November 3rd and the 17th. On November 3rd, we will also do the Financial Indicators Meeting, which will begin at 6 o'clock. That's joint with the School Committee and Jones Public Library Trustees. Our regular meeting on the 17th of November will also include a public forum on the budget. The various committees are meeting at different times during the next couple of weeks. CRC is October 23rd at 3:00. Finance is October 28th at 2:00. GOL is tomorrow night, October 21st at 6:30. And TSO is October 23rd. That's this Thursday at 10:00. Please note, there is a four towns meeting. It's been confirmed that it will be on November 8th at 9:30 in the Middle School Library. On October 22nd, we can go to the announcements. We have our ribbon cutting of the North Common. And then on October 26th, we have the Halloween Spooktacular in downtown that will be both outside and then at the Bang Center. And on 28th, we will cut the ribbon for the Centennial Water Plant. I want to also call attention to the senior survey that is out there. Want to mention that the town manager evaluation will begin this week and that, as we have in the next, we'll go on to the next slide. And then let's go on to the next one. And with regard to elections, the last day to register is this Friday. The last day for a mail-in ballot is Tuesday, October 28th. And the last day and hour to vote in-person absentee at town clerk's office is Monday, November 3rd. Please note that we have early voting available next week in the town hall on the first floor. Generally, it's 8:00 to 4:30, except on Thursday, October 30th, where we have extended hours till 7:00. And then finally, I want to mention that there's a District 1 meeting on October 29th at 6:30 at the North Amherst Library. And District 2 meeting on Wednesday, November 19th at 7:00 PM by Zoom. And that will be exclusively devoted to discussing, having one final discussion about the Heatherstone Roundabouts. Going to move to the hearing on the EverSource petition for underground primary ducts and cable to supply EV bus charging electric services at 170 Chestnut Street. We'll start with Ryan Morich. Please come forward, Ryan, from EverSource. Thank you.
Excuse me, could you make sure the green light is on, on that mic?
Oh, there we go.
There we go. Thank you so much.
I'm Ryan Morich from EverSource, here to petition for the Duck Bank on Chestnut Street.
Okay, is there anything specific you want to point out to us?
Let's see. They installed it already.
So this is after the fact?
Yes, so EverSource did not install the ducts. And we didn't give them permission to install the ducts, but they wanted to get it in before school started.
I see.
I just wanted to be transparent about that, that they're already installed.
We appreciate your transparency on that. Thank you so much. Are there councillor comments or questions? Yes.
Okay, I wasn't going to ask anything, but I guess this goes to the manager. Why didn't we get this hearing before they were installed?
Well, the hearing request came on September 15th, so I don't know the answer to that question.
Guilford.
Guilford Boring.
Good evening. Schools called up and had the deadline to get the stuff, the conduits installed. So we looked at what was going on, and it's actually the best route for the line to go. So we gave them permission to cut the road. The ducts were installed. This is just cleaning up the paperwork, so now the ownership goes to EverSource and not the school.
I guess it still doesn't quite answer the question that people are asking, and that is why didn't this come to us before it was done?
It didn't come to you because the schools didn't quite understand the whole process, but they had a contractor coming in to do the work. And the contractor was ahead of the approval to do the poll petitions. So the contractor applied for a permit to cut the public way and install the conduit. And that's what we do in the office on a routine basis, is give those conduits. And if it had stayed, if Ryan didn't bring, and EverSource didn't bring the petition forward, it would have been a conduit owned by the school, not a conduit owned by EverSource.
I see. Thank you. Anna, you have a question.
I think this is also for the town manager. I think that in the future, a heads-up via email maybe would have been welcome. I think that it's a bit jarring to hear, hey, it's already done, rubber stamp it. And I know that we don't want to get into that practice, and I don't think that this was an intentional decision, but I do think that, in my mind, this would have warranted a FYI, the work has occurred. And kind of what Guilford just said about explaining the confusion and what led to this. And obviously, hopefully, I guess, maybe it's not obvious, but hopefully, this doesn't occur again, that we can make sure that the university and the colleges are aware of the process that is supposed to be followed. But I think September 15th was over a month ago. And so I do think, an FYI, that something is coming up on your agenda that's already been done, but you still need to approve, would maybe be fitting in future, should this ever happen again, but hopefully it doesn't.
Is there any other comments from councillors at this time? Are there any people from the public who would like to speak to this issue? If you're in the room, you have signed up. If you are on Zoom, please raise your hand at this time. Do you have anyone that has signed up, Athena?
I do, but just for public comment, regular public comment.
Regular public comment. Thank you. Seeing no other comment, I'm going to go back and just ask councillors for one final round if there's any additional questions or comments. Seeing none, I'm going to make a motion to close the hearing. Second.
Second.
Thank you. Anna Devlin-Gothier.
Aye.
Councillor Ette.
Aye.
Lynn Griesmer is an aye. Councillor Hanke.
Aye.
Bob Hegner.
Aye.
Councillor Lord.
Aye.
Pam Rooney. I'm sorry, she's absent. Councillor Ryan.
Aye.
Cathy Shane.
Yes.
Andy Steinberg.
Aye.
Councillor Walker.
No, I'm here.
And Jennifer Taub.
Yes.
Did I miss anybody?
Pat DeAngelis.
Pat DeAngelis. Thank you. Thanks. Okay, the hearing's closed. We'll be voting on that when we get to the action items. We're going to move now to general public comment.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ryan. We're going to move to general public comment. Again, if you're in the room and you want to make general public comment, please make sure you've signed up with Athena. If you are in the audience on Zoom and you would like to make public comment, please raise your hand at this time. How many people in the audience?
Four.
Four. And I have one on Zoom. Why don't we begin with the audience? If you will, just a moment. Public comments on matters within the jurisdiction of the town council, residents are welcome to express their views for up to two minutes. Actually, I'm going to three minutes. I'm sorry. The council will not engage in a dialogue or comment on a matter raised during general public comment. Public comments are not reflective of the opinions of the town council. Please make sure you watch the clock so that you're aware of the timing, and we will proceed.
Ian Rodewald.
Please state your name and where you live.
Thank you. Ian Rodewald, District 1, on Pine Street. The Amherst Town Council has passed a number of resolutions in the past in support of funding public higher education and making public higher education available to all from the Fair Share Amendment, a resolution of 2022, the resolution calling for the cancellation of student debt that same year, and a resolution in support of higher ed for all by passage of the Cherish Act in 2024, I believe. I applaud the council for passing these resolutions in the past and urge you this evening to pass the Public Higher Education Resolution to address federal tax and funding cuts. The DRIVE Act, which this resolution calls on the legislature to pass, would make Massachusetts the first state in the nation to address the current politically motivated attacks on higher education. It is a $400 million investment statewide with $200 million from the Fair Share Funds earmarked to backfill federal cuts made to public colleges and universities. I'll add that the funding must extend beyond just research cuts to also include jeopardized academic programs. I worked on the Fair Share Amendment campaign as the Western Mass Regional Organizer, and when the Fair Share Amendment passed, Amherst had one of the highest, if not the highest, votes proportionally in favor statewide, with the yes vote ranging from 82% to 88%, depending on the precinct. I hope that this evidence of support for the Fair Share Amendment, as well as the previously passed resolutions this council has passed supporting public higher education, will encourage you to vote in favor of tonight's resolution. Thank you.
Thank you for joining us. I'm going to go to Zoom. Amber Cano-Martin, please enter the room. State your name and where you live.
Yes. Hi, my name is Amber Cano-Martin. I'm a resident of District 2, speaking tonight in support of the proposed Town of Amherst Resolution regarding increased funding for public higher education. I want to thank sponsors Pat DeAngelis and Ian Rodewald and Phyllis Keenan for bringing it before the council. I'm speaking to you as someone who has benefited from public higher education. First at SUNY Albany in New York, where I grew up, and then at UMass, where I did my graduate work. I was able to graduate from these institutions and begin my career with minimal student debt, which is what I want for all students everywhere. No one should have to spend their lives buried in debt in order to obtain a quality education. Like many, I have been watching the Trump administration's attacks on higher education, including cutting federal funding for programs such as Pell Grants that make higher education accessible for low-income students. They have also attacked funding for research and science in the public interest. This directly affects our town, where the majority of our population is connected to UMass Amherst either as a student, employee, or faculty member. It is our major source of employment, as well as one of the most affordable universities available to students in our state. Public higher education is an important tool for social and economic mobility, particularly in addressing inequality rooted in racism. I'm very happy to see that Governor Healey has brought forth a state-level initiative to preserve funding for public higher education, the DRIVE Act. This proposed $400 million investment in our public colleges and universities will help to insulate them from the damaging cuts occurring at the federal level. $2 million will come from our Fair Share Tax Initiative, which is also something I supported, by the way. I was trying to get signatures for that, so happy we have it. And then the other 200 will come from other sources. But I think that this is a great way to invest our fair share funds. I hope that you all will vote yes in support of this important resolution. I'm sure the support of the Town of Amherst, who hosts the flagship UMass campus in the state, will go a long way towards helping our governor and legislature successfully pass this measure. Thank you.
Thank you for joining us, Amber. We're back to the room.
Vincent O'Connor.
Vincent O'Connor, 175 Summer Street. Usually, in these public comments, period, we are asked to address the chair. And in this case, I'm actually addressing the chair specifically because she is the person who might be able to implement the proposal I'm making. At the Legal Women Voters Candidate Forum last week, we all heard CREST concerns. The council needs to know what the problems are regarding CREST fulfilling the promise anticipated by its initiators. If we wait until the new council takes office, we will lose valuable time in terms of budget preparation colliding with program evaluation. So I'm here to ask the chair to prepare a process for the appointment of a Public Safety Committee composed of three councillors and two members of the public for the week after the November 4th election. Clearly, CREST's potential cannot be explored without evaluating the involvement of the Police Department, nor can the dispatch issue be addressed without being able to talk to the leadership folks in the Fire EMS department. We need a head start by a committee that represents the council's support for CREST. This should not be an appointment to re-debate the council's support for CREST. It should be a process by which the council, through three of its members and two members of the public, becomes better informed about what the problems are for CREST reaching its potential and how they might be able to be solved. Thank you very much.
Thank you for joining us, Vince.
Brock Togerson.
Hello, my name is Brock Togerson, and I am a senior lecturer in physics at University of Massachusetts Amherst, and I live at 197 East Hadley Road, down in District 3. And I am also here to encourage this council to support the DRIVE Act with the motion to tell that Town of Amherst supports the DRIVE Act. I am a teaching faculty at UMass. I don't actually do research. So fortunately, I myself have been isolated from the draconian and anti-scientific and anti-realistic cuts coming down from the federal government. However, I can tell you, as someone who teaches 300 undergrads that I saw this morning, and now up to 30 or 40 graduate students as teaching assistants, that they are being affected. And we've heard about the impact to science as a whole, and we've heard about the impact to the faculty, which form a huge part of our town's community. But I also want to talk about the impact on some of the most vulnerable members of the UMass community, some of the students. There are many students in my class who work in research labs as their college job. And they must have a college job with the cost of tuition being what it is right now. I have students who are working 40, even 50 hours a week in various capacities. And I would much rather them work in a research lab than, you know, in the dining hall. Not there's anything wrong with a dining hall, but, you know, working in a research lab helps further their scientific goals, gives them the scientific training that they're going to need to be the next generation of scientific leaders. And the same is true for our graduate students. I have two graduate students who work with me very closely on a regular basis, who are scrambling to find funding opportunities whose graduations are going to be delayed, or in one case, hurried along because the funding isn't there anymore. And one of them has left the state. Brilliant scholar has left the state because he was forced out early and has now left the state. And so we have lost that talent. And I would hope that Massachusetts, being a leader in the knowledge economy in this country, and who has recognized the benefit that these people bring, can help support where the federal government will not to keep these people pressing the frontiers of science and humanities forward and keeping them here in the state to benefit the Commonwealth and the country as a whole. Thank you.
Thank you for joining us, Brock.
Maria Kopicki.
Thank you.
Maria Kopicki, South Amherst. I'm here to talk to you today about the process for the appointment on the Conservation Commission and the inexcusable treatment of Conservation Commissioner Alex Hor. I hope that you've read the letters that I've sent to you, but just to have a brief recap. Alex Hor served admirably for three years. He applied for reappointment. He heard nothing. This was in June. He was not granted an interview. And then in September, he was summoned to the town manager's office, where he was told that he would not be nominated for reappointment. He asked why. He asked to be given reasons. He was not given those reasons. He was told that those reasons would be forthcoming. He asked for a second meeting. He was granted a second meeting, but those reasons were still not given to him. He has been since, he has been asked to continue to serve on the commission until a replacement was found, and now a replacement has been nominated. He still hasn't been told why. What is the reason? There have been vague accusations and insinuations, and his character has been besmirched by this really horrible, unkind, and unprofessional process. You don't treat employees this way. You don't treat volunteers this way. You don't treat anybody this way. You guys are the supervisors of the town manager. This appointment process needs to be reformed. Alex Hor deserves a public apology for how he's been treated. I don't know what you're going to do tonight, and it's really sad that there was now another person that has been dragged into this, the current nominee for this post. It's not fair to her. Please. You are the town manager supervisor. He did not conduct a proper process, but you can change that. And if he wasn't willing to tell somebody who allegedly did something, hey, you could have done this better. Somebody didn't appreciate this. Whatever this allegation is, should have and could have been addressed at the time, not in the manner that it happened. You can have that conversation with the person that you are supervising and say, you cannot do this. You cannot treat people like this. And when you don't get anybody showing up to apply to be on committees and boards, you'll know why.
Thank you for joining us. That concludes public comment. We're going to move on to the consent agenda. The items were selected because they were assumed to be non-controversial. After I read the motion, if you would like to remove an item, please raise your hand and just ask to be removed. You'll speak to that reason later on. Otherwise, we'll seek a second and move on. To move the following items and the printed motions and the thereafter, and approve those items as a single unit. 6A, adoption of resolution in support of the Town of Amherst Community Heart and Soul Project. 6B, resolution regarding increased funding for public higher education. 11A, approval of minutes, October 6, 2025, regular meeting minutes. There any requests for removal? Kathy, I think I saw your hand, but I don't see it on the Zoom. That's fine.
I'm just looking for the but.
That's fine.
I have a question on the resolution to support public education, so I think I need to remove it, so I guess that's my question.
Thank you. We'll come to that later. Are there any other questions or comments? Seeing none, we'll move to a vote. The vote in this case only includes 6A and 11A. Councillor Ette.
Aye.
Point of order.
I'm sorry, second. Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second the motion. Hegner.
Thank you. Okay, Councillor Ette.
Aye.
Lynn Griesmer is an aye. Councillor Hanke.
Aye.
Bob Hegner.
Aye.
Councillor Lord.
Aye.
Councillor Ryan.
Aye.
Cathy Shane.
Yes.
Andy Steinberg.
Aye.
Jennifer Taub.
Yes.
Councillor Walker.
Yes.
Pat DeAngelis.
Aye.
Anna Devlin-Gothier.
Aye.
It's unanimous with one absent. We're going to move then to the first one, which is the Heart and Soul. And as one of the sponsors, I'm just going to read the last part. And that is now, therefore, we, the Amherst Town Council, do hereby resolve to support the Community Heart and Soul Project. We're going to move on to the next one. And I'm going to place the motion on the table, seek a second, and then turn to Cathy Shane to adopt the resolution in support of the town, I'm sorry, to adopt the resolution regarding increasing funding for public higher education as presented. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Cathy, please go ahead.
Yes, my question is, it names a specific amount toward the end of it. And I wanted to know whether this is an increase in the allocation or is a minimum and similar to the allocation that has been allocated in the past. And the reason I'm asking is, when you look at the trend over time, one of the things we all thought when we voted for the millionaire's tax And the reason I'm asking is when you look at the trend over time, one of the things we all thought when we voted for the millionaire's tax is it would be a windfall for K through 12 education, and we haven't seen that. There has been a substantial allocation through K through 12, but one of the big things, and we were a beneficiary of it in Amherst, was toward the MSBA, the Building Commission. It didn't come into the budget. So my question really is, is this an increase or is this saying at least this amount and it's similar to what it has been in the past?
Actually, Ian, would you answer that?
I'm not sure I have a specific answer to that question. I know that I sent an email to you earlier today that FY '24, the percentage of K through 12 funding and, and higher ed funding were equal, relatively equal. K through 12 being, I think, 22% of the whole fair share amendment funds and K through, and higher ed being 23%. And then FY '25, it was 19% both. So that doesn't answer your question specifically about the 200 million, where that's coming from. I believe it's to urge legislators to make that the priority in this.
Thank you. I appreciate that you, I knew you didn't have time to do FY '26, which was also an allocation. I mean, Amherst benefited by the roads provision where they started counting miles. It's just all of these streams come very locally, so it's not anti-other uses that are education. So my question really was, will it, will it potentially eat into K through 12 or is it about the level it has been and you're just establishing a floor? And I think you're saying you're establishing a floor.
Yeah, okay, that's how I understand it.
Counselor Hanke.
I have similar questions because the wording of the resolution, and the be further resolved says that the council urges the state legislature to set aside 200 million from the more than $2 billion generated by the fair share amendment as a first step. So it's already set aside nearly 500 million from the nearly $2 billion generated. So I don't quite understand what that particular further resolved is actually getting at, hence the same confusion that I think Counselor Shane was saying, which is, it's already been met on the raw wording that is in the resolution. And so is this an aim for, and I looked at the drive bill that I didn't even know was referenced here because it doesn't mention the drive bill at all, that all the commoners seem to say this supports. So another confusion there of the drive bill is more than just higher education. Is this aiming for 200 million in addition to the what over the last three years has been at least 200 million a year? For out of the yearly allocation of fair share, 400 million? Because if that's the case, I think Counselor Shane is absolutely right. And where I've been concerned with the prior resolutions, it would take away from K-12 education, which we absolutely need, fair share money for K-12 education that is in general operating money, not specifically for free lunches, which is where the majority of fair share money for K-12 is going.
Pat, would you like to address that?
Not sure completely if I can. As far as I can see, and I, this 200 million, that's part, it's being presented by the governor as part of the drive initiative in terms of bringing more support for higher education, but also for innovation and the creation of and sustaining of research, et cetera. And I, I don't have a problem. I feel like the amount of money that has been shared so far for pre-K through high school through grade 12 and higher education has been very similar. I think that the issues about expanding colleges, et cetera, and supporting people are critical issues. And they're as critical as pre-K through 12 education. And I don't think, given the amount of money that has been coming in from fair share, that that will be a problem. I also, if I'm wrong, I believe the 200 million will be going into a bridge fund to be used over time towards the goals. And Ian, if you want to add anything, because I'm not the most articulate person on this. But I think, I think it's, I'm not going to say what I was going to say.
Are there any other questions or comments?
Do not think this threatens pre-K through 12 education.
Thank you. Are there, no other questions or comments? The motion's been made and it has been seconded. We're going to move to a vote. Lynn Griesmer is an aye. Counselor Hanke.
Abstain.
Bob Hegner.
Aye.
Counselor Lord. Counselor Lord. Okay, I don't see her at this time. Counselor Ryan.
Aye.
Kathy Shane.
Abstain.
Andy Steinberg.
Abstain.
Jennifer Taub.
Yes.
Counselor Walker.
Yes.
Pat DeAngelis.
Aye.
Anna Devlin-Gothier.
Aye.
Counselor Ette.
Aye.
The motion passes with.
Do you want to try Counselor Lord again?
I, yes, I will. Counselor Lord. Okay, I'm going to mark her as absent for that particular vote. It's eight in favor, three abstain and two absent. We're going to move on to the next item on our agenda, which was held over from last time we met. And that is a presentation on the Hickory Ridge update. For that, I'm going to call on Assistant Town Manager Dave Zomack.
Good evening, Lynn and, and council and public. Happy to be here tonight.
David, could you talk a little more into your mic? Thank you.
Sure. Can you hear me now? Okay?
Yes, thank you.
Happy to be here. Sorry, we couldn't do this a couple of weeks ago, but happy to be here with you tonight. I know it's a busy night for you. I'm going to try to go as quickly as possible, leave enough time for questions at the end. My apologies in advance. My comments and narrative may not do justice to the entire project. We've been working on this for a couple of years and this was kind of put forth as an update, but I do want to get to your questions and any comments you might have. I'm going to go fairly quickly, but as you all know, reimagining Hickory Ridge has been underway for a couple of years now. We have been extremely busy and I want to give you kind of an overview of where we are in just a few minutes as quickly as I can. Next slide, please. And thank you Athena, by the way, for running the show in advance. Want to speak a little bit about these main topics, give you a little bit of a project overview, which I think most, most of the council is very familiar with the project. Talk about conservation and ecological restoration, which is, is an area we've been focusing on. Update on trails and with a particular focus on future development. I think the goal in 2026 is really to move from a lot of the work we've been doing on assessment, evaluation. We've, we've gotten a lot accomplished there and really move on to kind of future development. What does the site look like a year from now, three years from now, five years from now? I do want to just remind everybody and ask for your patience, because when we embarked on this Hickory Ridge project, I for one had said this is going to be a multi-year endeavor and it certainly has been. And I'll tell you a little bit about why that is, why that is. It's a big project with a lot of moving parts. And we led, let's not all for, let's, let's remember that we led with conservation and ecological restoration. This is one of the most ecologically sensitive and diverse pieces of property in the Town of Amherst, bar none. So there's a lot of complexity with regard to the ecological resources on the property, and we'll talk more about that in a few minutes. Next slide, please. I'm not going to go too much into the history. I think we all know that we got an incredible bargain sale in this property. I think it's important to remember that we got into the deal when solar was already part of the, the project. So we didn't have anything to say about where the solar was, how much of the solar was on the site. And we had very little to say about the solar project in general, not the permitting, not the, not the way it fit on the land, but the components, if you will, relative to off-taking and, and all of that. So we got an incredible sale, bargain sale at 520. But some of those elements were already worked out by the previous owners in advance. I do want to point out at the bottom, we talk about possible municipal uses. We talked way back when about municipal buildings, affordable housing, other town opportunities there. And I'll say a little bit more about those in, in an upcoming slide. I do want to say that initially, because of the emphasis on a South Amherst fire station, town staff really looked hard at, at a fire station location on the frontage of Hickory Ridge. And working with our, our relatively new fire chief and the town manager, we, we fairly recently determined that Hickory Ridge was too far south for, for a South Amherst fire station. So I just wanted to put that out there. I think that's a fairly well-known position, if you will, of town staff, but I just wanted to put it out that we started with that as a potential use for the frontage. And now we're going to be looking at option B or C and certainly affordable housing. We've talked about senior affordable housing on some of that frontage and we'll be moving into those explorations in 2026. Next slide, please. Not going to go into great detail. This has been in your packet. It is certainly available to the public online in the packet. But this kind of illustrates the complexity of the site. Yes, it's 150 acres and right smack dab through the middle of it runs the Fort River, this incredible natural resource. I think, I'm not sure if Athena has the ability to point out where the two solar fields are. They are the gray hatched area. One is to the west. We call that the western array. And then we have the central array, which looks small. It's actually the green area as well. It's bigger than, than what it represents here because there's a crosshatching over it. And then when I talk about the frontage along West Palmeroy Lane, I talk about the area where the clubhouse is, which if Athena could circle that, it is that area right there with the parking lot and formerly had the clubhouse. As you all know, we have removed the clubhouse so that, that aspect of the property has been cleaned up and dealt with appropriately. In terms of the building footprint, for council members and members of the public have asked me, how many buildable acres do we have? Well, if Athena could circle that area again, particularly right in that area, that is the buildable area we have. I normally do not peg it with a specific acreage because I know that everybody will kind of latch on to that and stick with that. How many buildable areas really needs to be studied? Because there's many factors that go into how, if and how and, and how that, that area on the frontage can be developed. We need to talk about the relationship of those acreage and setbacks to wetlands, to riverfront area, to flood plain, to estimated priority habitat. And we also need to look at storm water, where if we are to develop that area in any way, what kind of buildings we would put there? What would be the impervious area that we would create there? And how much land do we need to infiltrate storm water? So all of those factors go into what is buildable on that frontage. What have I, what I've always said, and I'll be consistent on this, is to say, what we'd like to do is look at a compatible use there and make it so we can still have the main trailhead parking and access to Hickory be in that same location. Because honestly, we don't have parking any other place. We don't have, we have access in other locations, but the parking for the, the, the trails will always be at West Palmeroy Lane. Next slide, please. We've done a lot of the community engagement. I won't go into great deal of detail on that. We did engage Amherst. We've done multiple meetings on the site. We've met with the butters. We've gotten lots of comments. Clearly, people have interests in Hickory Ridge that run from community gardens to affordable housing, to municipal buildings, to pump tracks, to you name it, disc golf, many, many ideas. And we're trying to sort through all of those and figure out what are compatible uses. Next slide, please. Again, lots to talk about here. We don't have a lot of time, but thanks in large part to staff working creatively. We brought hundreds of thousands of dollars to bear on the site. Here you have a picture of one of the culverts that we've removed there. In terms of climate resiliency, we're looking at what culvert should remain? Should culverts be enlarged? What can we, or in, in most cases, remove because they're so old and undersized? We're working with the state on, on rare and endangered species management there. We're, we're hoping to be part of this 250 to $500,000 grant for in-stream restoration there to help with flood attenuation, but also wildlife habitat enhancement. So lots of things going on there in terms of ecological restoration. Way at the bottom is a bullet I'll just point it out. We are required, there will be two conservation restrictions covering a large part of the property. And I won't go into great detail on those yet. We're working through the specifics with the state. But those conservation restrictions are part of the mitigation for the solar property projects and also part of our legal requirement because we use CPA dollars for part of the property. Obviously, the conservation restrictions will exclude the frontage along West Palmeroy Lane. Next slide, please. Trails, trails and connectivity. Again, we led with this, with the acquisition of the, of the property. Again, I won't go into great detail on this, but we have about a mile of fully accessible trails completed. We're in the process of completing more of the trails. We've gotten grants to do some of this. We've sought CDBG, CPA and other funding to do this. Eventually, we will make a connection from West Palmeroy Lane to East Hadley Road. Another connection to West Street over to the Village Center will make a connection to Orchard Valley. So literally thousands of residents who live within walking or biking distance of Hickory Ridge will be able to access the trails. And there'll be over two miles of fully ADA trails on the property. Again, we're in process of doing that. It takes time. We need to replace bridges, et cetera, et cetera. But you can see some of the work is already done. And I will point out, somebody asked me recently, well, why aren't all the trails open? One of the reasons we haven't formally opened them is because the solar project isn't done yet. The solar project is still a full construction site. We can't invite the public to fully take, take part in all of our trails because many of the trails will cross through some of the current construction site. Once Pure Sky is done, they pack up their equipment, they start their solar project, the, they turn on the, the power, if you will. Their solar panels do what they're going to do. They have a fenced-in area and then we can complete our entire trail system. So next slide, please. Again, just showing what, you know, some artist's rendering of what we hope and, and we've already achieved in some of the areas. We have new bridges, new walkways already in place. We haven't done a formal opening or grand opening or ribbon cutting yet because we want Pure Sky to finish up and then we'll be able to get on the site, particularly north of the river. Next slide, please. Again, showing some of the progress, some of the challenges of working on an old golf course, finding this infrastructure, removing this infrastructure. We don't have any plans for Hickory Ridge. They turned over the keys and said, here, here it is. But we, we are finding old irrigation systems, old pipes, old. here, here it is. But we, we are finding old irrigation systems, old pipes, old culverts, old infrastructure that we sometimes didn't know was even there and we're addressing it as we go. Next slide, please. The solar project, working with Pure Sky, I, I would not be perfectly honest if I didn't tell you it has been a long and challenging project. This is a very complex twenty-six acre solar site. I think now this slide might be a little bit dated. I think we're more than five point two four megawatts. And the, the initial, the original project did not include battery storage. This battery storage was added later. The Conservation Commission and staff from DPW to Conservation, to Inspection Services, to the Fire Department have all been working together to get Pure Sky to the finish line, to get them off the site and start producing energy from this solar project. My hope is that in the next three to four months, they will be done. They will lock those gates, back their way out of the, the project area and then we can fully develop all of the trails and the other attributes of the project. Next slide, please. Again, different grants we've gone after and gotten from state grants and we've certainly worked with CDBG and, and CPA funds. We've been successful with the Mass Trails Grant and we've had great, great partnership, particularly with U S Fish and Wildlife Service. I can't say enough about their staff. As we know, their staff, including the Regional Office, has gone through some very, very difficult times in recent months, but we have wonderful, wonderful partners at U S Fish. And we can't say enough about them coming out and helping us and volunteering and, and really being committed to the project. Next slide. This is just a quick overview of, of the acquisition and some of the additional funding we've needed for the project, most recently taking down the old clubhouse, which was a capital, a capital item that, that we worked very closely. Obviously Bob Parent and Rob Mora and others worked with us to get that clubhouse down as most people recall, but I'll just put it out there. The clubhouse was not in any condition to reuse. Unlike the, the recent acquisition of the Trustees of Reservations over in Haydenville at the Beaver Brook Country Club, that country club was well maintained and a wonderful asset to the property. This clubhouse was not an asset and it was really a liability for us and I'm, I'm happy to have it down and off the site. Next slide, please. So what are we looking at for next steps? As I said, the hope is for Pure Sky to be moving off the site. They still do have some work ahead of them and, and winter is coming. They've got, they've got to install the batteries. They've got to work with us on a significant culvert removal that is part of their project, not ours per se. They've got to replace a bridge. They've got to complete an emergency access route, which we've negotiated with them. So they've got a couple more months of work to do before they're done there. Obviously, we, we need to complete the trail system in twenty-six and beyond. We'll continue to work on, on conservation restrictions and ecological restoration. And then, as I said, in, in, in bold here, really explore those development options for the future. Could this be a likely place for a senior affordable housing project? I think it could be. Up in the upper right hand corner, we have an artist's rendering of what something like that could look like. How many units, the density, the height, all of that is to be determined. And I want to put out there that staff and I think that the exploration of housing on that site, now that we're moving in that direction and we needed to, we needed to work through a lot of the other work that we did assessing all the other natural resources. Staff and I believe that we would probably take a similar approach to what we've taken on the VFW and the South Amherst School Campus down on the Common in South Amherst. And that is, we would engage a designer to work with us to have a public process where we would invite the public in. We would talk about needs. We have the updated housing production plan that, that is working its way through the council and various committees. And we would use that information to inform a public process on reuse of the frontage along West Pomeroy Lane. We're also going to explore other options. As I said, there's lots of other things that were, were talked about in our, in our process and we'll explore as many of those as possible. I want to be realistic that not all of those things are going to be possible, either because of ecological restrictions we're under or simply funding. We can't do it all at Hickory Ridge. We have many other recreation areas. We have many other conservation areas. It doesn't all have to be done at Hickory Ridge. Let's see, and we just need to be mindful of staff capacity. We've been trying to move along the VFW process, the South Amherst Campus process, and now in twenty-six, hopefully with a new planning and ecologic, Economic Development Director on board, we will be able to breathe a little bit more in the Planning Department, my, my staff and I, and have some more capacity to, to move things forward. Next slide, please. FEMA, I just want to, we all know that Hickory Ridge floods. We all know we are a very wet town. I, I just want to give the council a little bit of a heads up that although you approve the, the, the quote final FEMA maps, I believe back in two thousand, it was probably late in two thousand twenty-four, FEMA is actually going to require us to do an update to those maps. And that will in some places change the FEMA mapping for various parts of town. So I'll just put that out there. We'll just need to be mindful of that as we look at future uses of the frontage and, and other amenities at Hickory and other places in town. Finally, last slide. Just wanted to thank all the people. It's not me, it's staff. This is a, this is the best list I could come up with. I hope it's, I hope it's complete. I hope I didn't miss anybody, but lots and lots of staff, partners have, have, have worked with us and we're not done yet. We still have easily a couple of years of, of reimagining the site to where we, we think we, we want to be. So thank you to all those people. Special thanks to Erin Jock as our Conservation Area Agent. She has done a fantastic job, not only with, with all the ecological restoration and, and all those, those complex issues, but also with the permitting for the Pure Sky project as well as the permitting for all the other things we've done out there. Every trail has been meticulously permitted through both the Conservation Commission and the Mass Office, the Natural Heritage and Endangered Species Program. So we are, we need to go through the same permitting process to put in a trail or, or rebuild a trail or repair a trail that we would put anyone through in all those resource areas. But thank you to that list of people and I'll stop there and take your questions.
Thank you. George, you have your hand up.
So first of all, Dave, thank you very much for this presentation. That's very informative and helpful. And also thank you very much to the staff and I appreciate you listening all the folks who put so much time and effort into this. It's, it's a great project and I know it means a lot to the residents of my district and I know it means a lot to the people in the town. I had two very quick questions, if I could. The first involved funding. You've made it clear that right now you're kind of in a stall because of waiting on Pure Sky. Once they are done and they hand over the keys and they leave, you talked about completing trails and access points. And my first question is whether we have sufficient funding for all that? We're just waiting for Pure Sky to step out of the way? Or is part of this also going to involve finding other sources of funding to complete the trail system that you have envisioned and the accesses that you've talked about?
Happy to answer that.
Please go ahead, David.
All the questions I want to. Yeah, so honestly, without a doubt, we will need more funding for trails somewhere down the road. I don't have a number on that. This will be, you know, we, we have completed most of the ADA trails. We now need to connect them. We have the loop trail, which is accessible. We have a north-south trail which is accessible. We now need to connect them. And at the end of the day, I think we will have certainly one of the longest accessible trails in the state of Massachusetts. For years I kept hearing about the Conti Trail, the Conti Trail, the Conti Trail in Hadley. I think we will have a trail that certainly is, rivals that in terms of natural beauty, accessibility, interest, et cetera. But there will be future asks of particularly CPA and we may need to go for some, some state funds as well. Particularly to make those challenging last connections up to East Hadley Road and over to West Street. You really would need, we'd really need a tour to get out there and I'm happy to run one of these in the spring. Once Pure Sky has left the site, then the site is ours. We can take a little bit of a breath and say, okay, here are those last few connections we need to make. We've actually built trails beyond the Pure Sky project, but we need to connect the dots. And that's what we can't do until they're fully off the site.
George, you had a second question?
Yeah, this is more specific to Orchard Valley. I've mentioned this to Dave before. I just want to mention it again. I know he's well aware of it. One of the things that I think about is, you know, once this is completely done, is the ability for people to walk and access it. We have a parking lot people can drive, which is great if you're coming from other parts of town. But as Dave mentioned, there are a number of neighborhoods around this that you, you should be able just to walk out your door and go to the site. And in particular Orchard Valley, the only access point that I'm aware of is the Farmington Road. And right now, as we all know, there's, there's no kind of crosswalk or any kind of, of, of rapid flashing beacon or anything. I know perhaps it's a bit premature. I also know there's no sidewalk on the other side of the road. So once people cross there, they still have to make their way to the, to the actual site. But I just want to put a word in for that as something that perhaps we could do sooner rather than later because certainly many people in Orchard Valley have already started using the trails and their only direct access unless they drive is that crossing at Farmington Road.
Yes, thanks for the reminder. No question, I would, you know, work with Guilford and, and the council to look at that, that access, you know, crosswalk or, or whatever is deemed the safest solution there.
Okay, Pat Tangilas.
Thank you and thank you, Dave. I have a, can you clarify is BEST battery energy storage unit being placed on the site? And if it is, it's an incredibly wet site, which is a bit dangerous. What would be the status of the structure to house that BEST?
Thanks for the question. Yes, there is a BEST system planned for the site. It has gone through rigorous, rigorous review by the Fire Department and by the Conservation Commission. And there is containment worked into the the pads for the BEST system. As I said in my opening remarks, BEST was not part of the original project. It was added mid, mid, midstream, if you will. But I, I have every confidence in the work that the Fire Department and the Conservation Commission has done to help permit that next step. And as I said, the batteries have not been installed yet, but we're looking for those to be installed sooner than later. One of the other, I will say, one of the other requirements that the Fire Department made of Pure Sky was in the event of a flood or some other unforeseen circumstance, if they couldn't get, or the Fire Department couldn't get from West Pomeroy Lane to the, to the arrays and the battery systems. We have, we have approved an emergency access road to the north. So I've worked with the Fire Department and it would be out of resource areas, so not involve wetlands and that will be built as well this fall. So feeling pretty good about those.
Thank you, and let's hope we don't need it. Just one more clarification. We'll work on both the BEST and the photovoltaic installation continued through the winter months.
They worked through much of the winter last year. The arrays themselves are, I don't have a percentage, but are, are most of the way completed and up. What needs to be, the, the work that still needs to be done is for the batteries to be installed. I believe some of the, the containment system, I haven't got an update on the pads and then the bridge work, the culvert replacement. Those are the main elements, I believe, and the Conservation Commission has asked for an update from Pure Sky, which may not happen Wednesday, but it would happen two weeks from Wednesday. I think we'll have an update from Pure Sky on that. But if weather permits, they work right through the winter.
Thank you.
Kathy Shane?
Thank you, Dave, and thank you for providing a lot of the information that I asked for. I just want to go back to the original purchase and how much we've sunk into this. I was on the first council, which means I was there, as were a few other people in the Finance Committee when this was proposed. Starting, one of the questions we asked was the acreage on the frontage. Each time I've asked, I've gotten a slightly different number. And the question really was what part of this is developable? And should we, we actually had a resident say, suppose we just sell it back, sell it off and let developers develop on it to whatever the lot size is. And I think it's the RO zone, but I'm not positive. Could we recoup the money? Because we pulled money out of free cash to buy this. It was CPA. So at this point, by your numbers, we've invested about nine hundred thousand dollars on the purchase. And then we've raised another almost six hundred thousand on grants that are specific to trails. So this has grown to be a fairly expensive overall project. But I still don't know much about that frontage on how much acreage we have, what could be located there? Does it have sewer, water, electric? And one of the questions I asked you is sort of what is the town valuation, the assessed value of that? Because we are, we're in need, we have, I value the open space and the conservation, but the town of Amherst is quite rich with open space and conservation. So when this was originally proposed, there was a lot spoken about that developable area that we were getting open space and land to be developed. So I would like you just to focus a little bit. We've seen the diagrams where there's some nice houses placed on there, but I've never gotten any sense of how much land. And tonight you talked about we need to reserve a parking lot so people can come and get access to this point. So how much do we really have as a town that we own, that we could think of developing in whatever direction we want? So that's my main question. And in two thousand nineteen, when we were doing this, we said, and when would we have this plan? You said, oh, in a couple of years. So we're in two thousand twenty-five now. So I'm, I'm looking at, you know, I know we were held up a lot by the solar part of it on getting the land, the transfer of ownership. So some of that time wasn't on your watch. It was just waiting. But so I'd like to know that because it's, it's a substantial amount. And when George asked, we still need more money for trails. I'm also worried, do we have the money to maintain the trails? You had one little line, maintenance. On what kind of overall expense on the operating budget are we taking on? And could we develop some of it and put it back on the tax rolls? Thank you.
David, please go ahead.
Yeah. Thanks for those questions. Again, I, I, I'm not trying to be elusive here on the number of acres, but keep in mind the frontage is in its own parcel, right? It's a hundred and fifty acre parcel. So the, the, the assessor doesn't assess the frontage. It is correct. It's RO, Outlying Residential. So there's a number of house lots there. We, we could determine, you know, there's five house lots there hypothetically. And you reserve a little, you know, a, a spot for a twenty car parking lot and, and off you go. We, that could be one option. So I guess what I'm, what I said in my remarks was from a staff capacity standpoint, we are moving toward a conceptual design process like we did with VFW in the last year and a half, two years, with South Amherst School that we are in process of doing. And now this. So it's kind of slotting in my timeline and in our staff capacity timeline into two thousand twenty-six, and I think we can, we can achieve that. In terms of other questions there, it does have water. It does have sewer. It's not its own parcel, so we don't have an assessment of the, the acreage. And again, I want to just be careful not to say there's five acres there. I've talked about five acres, but is that five acres of actual buildable land? Or what about stormwater? How do you? How do you deal with stormwater in that five acres or in addition to that five acres? So those are the things that we'll determine through this conceptual design charrette period that we're going to do similar to VFW and similar to South Amherst Campus. We also know that the pilot will kick in. The pilot, in all honesty, has not kicked in yet because it doesn't kick in until the on switch is, is switched. So as soon as that is connected to the grid and it starts generating power, then Kim Mu and, and all the assessing staff smile and we, we get that revenue. And I think Kim will be looking at what is that revenue based on a project that is somewhat larger and has more, you know, the assessment, I believe, will be larger than the original because, because they added the best system to that. So there'll be an incremental increase in that. I put in $80,000 a year, I think that was my estimate. But I'll check in with Kim to see if that's an accurate annual payment for that pilot. So that's where we're moving is, is toward that conceptual work in 2026. But it does have water, it does have sewer, no question, there, there are buildable acres there. Is it the best scenario to put five houses? Or put 25 units of affordable senior housing there or X? We'll explore all of that in the next phase of this project.
Bob Hegner? Lynn, can I just follow up? And I, I did go to the consultant meeting on the South Amherst School. And one of the frustrating things is everyone was saying how many acres we have and what could be buildable here? Because we were moving houses around and no one had any sense and there were no answers. So I think it's not a useful, you know, and how much could this land hold? And how big is the existing southeast school? Because we're talking about converting it. So I'm hoping if we do something, we have, you know, are we talking about five acres or is it six acres? And what could be there if we can't be any taller than three buildings? So I, I just, it's, it's a little bit frustrating because originally it was eight acres. So you're down, we're down to about five, which is okay, I understand.
No, we're not, we're, we're not, that's, I guess what I would, that's what.
And I played golf there way back when. And so one of the reasons the golf course didn't do very well is how wet it is. They just had to close it periodically. So it's always had, those last pictures you showed weren't surprising in terms of what goes on. So I, I'm just, I'm not asking you for concrete answers, but more to get to concrete kinds of plans. Thank you.
It's one of the reasons, though, I don't like to put acreage out there because then people hold on to that and we haven't really gotten to that. On the South Amherst Campus, I can tell you, I mean, that's about three acres. There's no surprise how many acres it is. It's one parcel that's, and, and actually on the South Amherst Campus process, we're moving toward the follow-up. So the first meeting was simply to gather information, hear from abutters, hear from developers. We are now going to come back with a second meeting for South Amherst Campus where we share kind of the three bears scenario, if you will, too hot, too cold, just right, maybe? Who knows? But there will be a density, we could do so many units, say, in a 40B scenario. Or we could do less density in other scenarios. So we just haven't gotten to that point on the South Amherst Campus. But we do a very similar thing here. We could sell it and, you know, X number of single family homes. Or we could do, as I said, 25, 30 acres of senior affordable housing or something like that. So there'll be kind of a, a wide spectrum of different options for it.
Thank you. Bob Hegner?
Yeah, I, I just wanted to follow up on what, some of what Kathy brought up, which is, it's clear that there are going to be some restrictions on developing whatever it is, however many acres we have, based on conservation, runoff, need for buffering and things like that. So if, as those plans begin to move towards fruition, if you could please let, lay out all of the particular constraints that might impact what we can do with the developable land, so to speak. That would be very helpful.
We will certainly do that in more detail. I will say that a couple of the slides that I shared in the slide deck, if you, if the public and others take a, a bit of time, you can actually see we have the layers of, of, of floodplain, wetlands, all of that is right there. And that begins to tell that story of what is available on the frontage. Now, through this conceptual design charrette process, we will hone that and say, okay, what is really doable? Like any developer would, what is really doable on this site?
Yeah, I mean, I'm just bringing up the point that, for, for example, with a wetland, you need to have a buffer. And so, you know, you, you can't develop right up to the edge of the wetland. So just things like that are, are going to be very important in terms of what we can do with the site in the future.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Counselor Hanke?
Thank you. Couple of reactions, conversation, and then also a question. Is, is it true that if we keep it one parcel, we can probably get a little more density in the buildable acreage? Because the whole acreage would count towards the lot coverage. In an RO, lot coverage isn't allowed very high. So if you split those parcels up, you've got even less of the buildable. If you put a parcel that's only quote the billable part, now you can't cover anything but like 20% of it. Whereas I think if you keep it as one big parcel, most of the buildable could be covered. And I'm not arguing that that's what we should do, but it's a valuable thing to think about in terms of whether the town manages it, in terms of RFPs or not, or sells it off. One thing that struck me regarding housing in town was reading the housing production plan and some indication that our town needs senior housing, but that much of the seniors or many of the seniors that are in town wouldn't qualify for state housing inventory, senior housing. So I'm interested in thoughts on if we put housing there at all. Is the town looking at fully 100% SHI housing? Or some sort of mix of SHI and non-SHI? Sort of 100 plus, you know, AMI housing, 100% plus, such, such that it wouldn't be on SHI? Particularly if we're looking at senior housing where seniors aren't moving out of their current neighborhoods, even if they want to, because there isn't housing that they qualify for, that they would like? Because they can't go into SHI housing? And we just don't have enough of sort of market rate housing for seniors? And then I have a question about your comment on FEMA. I thought when we did flood maps, flood maps were good for like 40 years. And I understand climate change is change, is an issue and all. But I thought we used the new system and that was one of the things that took our flood maps so long was because we had to sort of redo them halfway through because of a new FEMA system. So can you explain to me why we might have to, just after we adopted it two years ago, have to completely redo them again?
I can't, but I know that to be true. And, and I don't want to take time tonight because I know we're a little over time and you've got many other things. But this is the information that I've gotten from our, our senior staff in, in planning. So it is a surprise to us. It's a little surprising that FEMA is focused on this right now, given other things that are happening right now in the country. But they are. And they looked at, apparently looked at the Connecticut River Valley and already have some preliminary maps for us to review. So it is probably coming down our way to look at those again. Happy to, I, I won't take the time tonight, these are all good questions and good comments. We just have not looked at any of that. I mean, some, I keep talking about staff capacity. We are moving toward the next phase of this project. Even though we haven't completed everything, we hear you. But we have not looked at, you know, a, a lot of those issues. We're, we're going to, we're going to learn from the housing production plan. We're going to take a look, obviously, at the Wayfinders work that was just done and came out on housing in the region. We're going to work with our housing trust. All of that will be public and be part of a public process to look at the frontage on Hickory. So it's coming. Thank you for your patience. We've been doing a lot and we're slowly beginning to turn toward alternative uses on the frontage.
Thank you. Andy?
Yeah, I'll be real quick because, and thank you for the presentation. It's for future maps that you have. I think it would be helpful if the location of the river through the property is shown on the map and possibly also the areas that are particularly wet during certain times of the year, so that we have a sense of recreationally and for other trails and for other purposes, how it all fits together. Thank you.
Thank you, I will take a look at the slide deck. I think a couple of slides may not, there were a couple of sub-slides that may not have, have come through. One was on trails and the other one was more detail on some of the things that, that were just mentioned. So let me take a look at those, but I, I appreciate all of that feedback.
So David, I want to go back to the Pure Sky installment and the fact that they are now adding a storage battery to it. And want to know how that has been discussed with residents nearby? What is the impact on the valuation of their land of the whole project? And does putting in the battery pack add to or detract from their value? And what happens to their home insurance, especially fire?
Those are all great questions. I don't know the answer to all of them. I will say that battery storage at Hickory has been extensively, extensively covered in public meetings. I can't even name how many public meetings we have had on this topic. But I would hazard a guess that there have been a dozen or more over the last two and a half years where that, where better, best has been discussed on the site. In terms of the valuation of the project, I have not reconnected with our assessor on that. But I would leave that to our assessing department to determine. They are well aware that battery storage has been added to this project. So I would, I would defer to them on any change in valuation. Keep in mind, the, the property is the town of Amherst. They have a 20-year lease on 26 acres. So we have never given up our rights to own the property. We have only leased 26 acres, approximately 26 acres, to them for the solar array. I am not aware of the need for increased insurance. The battery storage will still be a significant, significant distance from any residential dwelling. You know, just rough numbers. I mean, could be multi-thousands of feet from the nearest residence. I haven't done that myself, I haven't looked at, at that distance. We, we could look at that, but I'm not aware that anything has come up with regard to property insurance.
When, when you're looking at that, would you also determine whether or not by putting battery storage on land we own and we are leasing, we add liability to ourselves? Thank you. Not anything else. David, thank you so much. I don't see any other hands. This has been a very thorough presentation. We want to thank you for taking the time.
Thank you, and we will keep you updated and we will, of course, invite the council and others of the community to our process in 2026 as we, as we explore the development potential on the frontage and the rest of the project.
I'm going to suggest that rather than go ahead, we'll come back to action items. We're going to take a five-minute break and reconvene at 8 o'clock. Please turn your videos off and your mics off. And when you come back, turn your video back on. Thank you. We need to reconvene. Thank you. As you come back, please turn your video on, especially if you are remote. Counselor Walker and Jennifer Taub, are you back?
Yes, I am. Thank you, Lynn.
Thank you. All right, we're going to get going on the next action item. This is the vote on the Eversource petition for underground primary ducts and cable project that's already been completed. So I'm going to make a motion and move for a second to approve the petition for poles, wires, and underground locations to add solely-owned underground ducts and cable going across road and town take connecting to private property ducts, two four-inch ducts total encased in concrete extending approximately 80 feet northerly from pole 18 slash 19 on High slash Chestnut Street as shown on the plan marked 17856122-80307525. Is there a second?
Ryan, second.
Thank you. Are there any other questions or comments? Counselor Hanke?
Yeah, I'm not going to change the motion, but it's kind of misleading when it says to add solely-owned underground ducts that are already there versus
Right.
change the ownership of, number one. But this is not the first time the council has been handed a hearing where it's already built. And so I think it was done that way for some of the poles that went on to the landfill or near the landfill while the landfill solar was being done. It's been done in other locations. I think we need a better process for it. And it doesn't sound like this one's necessarily Eversource's fault because Eversource didn't install them. It's in some sense, the town's own fault. So I I'm kind of sad that we keep ratcheting up how many I can count on my hand. And it needs fixed and it, I don't know what town manager you need to do to tell the rest of the departments that it's just not acceptable to not give us an option.
No, I agree with you 100% on that and we'll try to figure out how to make sure that that doesn't happen again. It puts some systems in place so it doesn't. I apologize for that.
Guilford Boring, you have your hand up.
I just kind of wanted to say that these things do happen and if you do not approve this petition, it just becomes the, it stays the property of the Amherst Regional School System. And then they work out an alternative deal with Eversource to run the power through the conduit they own. So yes, I understand it's after the fact, but the school kind of wanted to, school is in a position to do it this time and Eversource wasn't brought on board at the time. So I understand that. And we do work to try to make sure everything goes well and that things are approved on time. The landfill process, the poles were installed on the town property, which does not have to have a pole petition. The pole that had to go in on the town right away was and did go to a pole petition. So it does get a little confusing sometimes as well.
Thank you. Pat D'Angelo.
I don't think anyone is saying that it's about not approving what's already happened. And I think what we're saying is that you need to look at your process and how we are notified. I put the responsibility more on you, Guilford, than I do on the town manager at this point. And you know, I respect your work, but this has happened before and it needs to change.
Are there any other comments? The motion's been made and seconded. We'll begin with Counselor Hanke.
Aye.
Bob Hegner.
Aye.
Counselor Lord.
Aye.
Pam Rooney. I'm sorry, Counselor Ryan.
Aye.
Kathy Shane.
Yes.
Andy Steinberg.
Aye.
Jennifer Taub.
Yes.
Counselor Walker.
Yes.
Pat D'Angelo.
Aye.
Anna Devlin-Gothier.
Aye.
Counselor Ette.
Aye.
Lynn Griesmer is an aye. It's unanimous with one absent. The next item is the proposed ADU Section 5.011. This is a first reading, therefore there is no vote. We're going to begin with a, I hope, a brief presentation. Then I'll ask for CRC and also GOL to make their reports. And so I'll begin with Nate Malloy. Is Nate here? There we are. Hi, Nate.
Harvey, one Nate Malloy, a planner with the town. So I'm presenting the ADU bylaw. And so, you know, this was referred by council earlier. This is in response to state legislation to allow a protected use ADU by right. So that's essentially a building permit. You know, during the hearing process, both the planning board and CRC held concurrent hearings and they looked at a similar version. And, you know, as I said in the memo, the planning board memo, there was a lot of updates to the bylaw itself, but the idea and structure didn't change. And that was in response to state determination. So the Attorney General's Office has been reviewing town meeting articles in the last six months and providing legal decisions on their interpretation of the state regulations and state legislation. And that informed a lot of the changes. So how do you interpret, you know, measurements or regulations? Are they reasonable? What can you do with a protected use ADU? And so a lot of the changes were done to bring the bylaw in conformance with, you know, state interpretation of the legislation and regulation. The planning board spent a number, you know, a number of meetings on this. They discussed whether or not to allow one or two ADUs. So we have the protected use ADU. And then there's a local ADU, and that's optional. And that was in the original version and they discussed whether or not to keep it or remove it. And they decided to keep it in place. They thought it is a nice opportunity for a different type of housing. It's larger. It's up to 1,200 square feet or gross square feet. So it's larger than a protected use. It requires owner occupancy. And they think, and it would, the permitting is a little funny on this. It's by administrative approval. If it's the first ADU on a property and by state regulation, it would have to be by special permit. If it's the second ADU on the property, if it comes after a protected use ADU. So the state requires more than one ADU on a property to be by special permit. You know, I think there's, you know, a few changes between the CRC and Planning Board. So on the Planning Board and the version the Planning Board recommended, there was three, limiting onsite parking, actually, to three onsite spaces for the ADU. The CRC recommended two onsite spaces. And so, you know, with the protected use ADU, there really are no conditions, you know, what we have in our bylaw now. We require owner occupancy. We limit it to three occupants. We have some other kind of design standards for accessory dwelling units. For a protected use ADU, none of those can apply. They'd be considered unreasonable. And so there's really, you know, really what the bylaw has done is, you know, meet the state definition, the regulations, and have a few extra conditions in there that staff and the planning board find, you know, think are reasonable. You know, at one point, there was a discussion of a student home definition and that was determined to be unreasonable. And, you know, it was never really adopted by the planning board. It was part of the discussion of, you know, the, for the longest time, we've used owner occupancy as a kind of a measure of whether it's by site plan review or a special permit. And they're trying to determine how could you require some owner occupancy of an accessory dwelling unit? And the really, the determination is for a protected use ADU, that the state has promulgated, you can't require any owner occupancy of the principal dwelling or the accessory dwelling unit. The idea is just to encourage, you know, more housing, more housing units be built. So for the local option we have in the bylaw, there is an owner occupancy requirement of one of the dwelling units, either the accessory dwelling unit or the principal dwelling unit. You know, so really there's an option and it replaces what's in the bylaw. So right now we have a section or a bylaw 5.011, and the idea is to remove all of it and replace it with this new bylaw. So we felt that's the easiest route rather than, you know, trying to track change the existing bylaws. It's really easier just to, you know, put in a whole new section. A big change from the previous version is gross floor area. So the state has said you have to use the measurement of gross floor area to calculate the access, you know, accessory dwelling units for protected use and for the principal dwelling. You know, we had habitable space before because that's a defined term by building code and what's in our zoning bylaw. But so gross floor area, you know, captures everything, including basements of building of code height. And so, you know, most, most protected use ADUs could get to the maximum 900 square feet because most of the principal dwellings in town, not just single-family homes, but it could be any structure with one dwelling unit, is going to be big enough to get to, you know, 900 square foot ADU. And we've used gross floor area to also define local accessory dwelling unit. So, you know, it's a pretty, it can be a pretty big unit. You know, because basements count an accessory dwelling unit for protected use, most protected use ADUs will probably not have a basement because if you have a 450-square-foot basement, that's 450 square feet of non-living space that counts for you to 900 square feet. So that was like a big change that happened while this was going through hearing is how you determine the size of the local ADU, a protected ADU, and then, and how we define local ADU. I think, you know, a lot of the other conditions, although there are some changes, most of them are pretty, you know, standard that we have. We removed some design standards because they weren't reasonable. You know, we require a parking management plan and trash plan. Those were seen as reasonable. You know, rental registration is something that's still required for protected or local. So there's not, you know, if there's any specific questions, but I know there's, you know, there's a lot of track changes in the document, but really the, kind of the intent and structure was from the original didn't change. It was just refining points to, you know, match the interpretation from the state.
Are there questions from the council? Again, this is the first reading. It's not a vote tonight. Anna.
All right. So I have a question, Nate, and then I'm going to do something insufferable. And I'm not going to read the whole thing, but I do just want to reference an excellent children's book when I ask my question because it is relevant, I promise. So my question has to do with the third to last section here in the, in the document that reads, "A local ADU shall be designed so that the appearance and scale of the structure is compatible with the principal dwelling." And this book, which is called The Big Orange Splot, if you have not read it, highly recommend, tells the story of a gentleman who had a paint, a can of paint spilled on his house. And when his neighbor said, "No, you have to conform, the, the appearance of the structure needs to be compatible with all the structures around it." He said, "Hang on. No, my home should be my own and should reflect what I want it to do." And painted his whole house and then, you know, explained to everyone that your house should be the thing of your dreams. Highly recommend the book, but the reason I say that is I'm really concerned with this sentence. I'm really alarmed by the fact that we are saying that the way that I'm reading it is that the appearance, the scale feels like a whole different issue, but specifically appearance needs to be compatible with the principal dwelling. So I'd love to hear, I know that this got unanimously reported out of CRC, but I'd love to hear, am I misunderstanding that? Because it feels like extreme overreach and quashing creativity and opportunity for folks to be able to build something that matches the needs that they have for an ADU. And so that's part one. Part two is, could you please explain scale of the structure? We talk a lot about square footage. That feels like it should kind of determine the scale of the structure. So if you could just explain that as well. Thank you.
Sure. Thanks. So the Planning Board, you know, although this was voted and recommended by the Planning Board, they had eliminated a few other conditions. One was about location of stairs and there were some other design criteria. And this one was discussed. And so I will say that a few Planning Board members also thought this was unnecessary. Just, you know, given the nature, if we want to, right, allow some flexibility, you know, we already have dimensional standards in our bylaw, you know, where something can be placed. We have, you know, and then we have the square foot limitation. This is, this is in, this condition is already in our bylaw as a general requirement for accessory dwelling units. So some of it was a carryover and how does it work? And so I think in the end, the idea is that this provides guidance to either the building commissioner or staff, if it's administratively approved, or, you know, to the zoning board of what does it mean to have, you know, to have some compatible look to the existing structure. You know, so for a protected use ADU, we, you know, we couldn't have this kind of requirement because we have, we don't have design requirements for a single-family home or a duplex. And so the state's saying, well, we couldn't have design standards for a protected use ADU. The Planning Board thought it would be nice to have a few more criteria for a local ADU to help, you know, like I said, guide staff with a decision. I agree. I think that it comes down to, you know, who's reviewing it. And so, you know, currently, right now, a lot of the Planning Board members are saying, well, for me, you know, we still could allow, you know, a modern structure in a historic neighborhood. And they think that could be compatible, but, you know, right, that could be interpreted differently by different staff or different board members. And the scale piece is, you know, we do have a height requirement in our bylaw in terms of number of stories in most residential districts. And so, you know, some of it would be, well, what if they put a two-story, two-and-a-half-story ADU, a local ADU in the front of the building, in front of the, you know, the principal dwelling? And it seemed out of scale with the, you know, if the principal dwelling was a single-floor unit, you know, it's two and a half stories out front in the front yard, somehow out of scale with the principal dwelling. And so, you know, again, it's, you know, it's almost on a case-by-case basis. How do you determine if it's, you know, compatible in terms of scale and appearance? And so, you know, the Planning Board did discuss this a bit. You know, the second sentence to that reads detached local ADUs shall be clearly accessory to the principal dwelling. And again, that was, you know, whether that is, you know, given a property and the dimensional standards and the setbacks, could the ADU be located in a, in a, you know, in a location or designed in a way that it reads as, you know, secondary to the principal dwelling? Most properties, it may be possible, and I just want to reiterate that an ADU could be contained within a dwelling. It could be an attached ADU, so it could be, you know, both in and then in addition to a principal dwelling or it could be a completely detached structure, you know, like a freestanding small house, tiny house. And so there's different variations of what that could mean. And so, you know, in some instances, this, this requirement might be, you know, minimally necessary given where it's designed or located. If it's behind the principal dwelling and you can't see it. You know, really this would only be, you know, something that is used if it's clearly visible and in a location that, you know, you know, say is visible from the street or on the side or front setbacks.
Bob Hegner.
Yeah, I, I'm a little confused about the, the gross living area. Are these minimum standards or are these sort of minimum and maximum? In other words, in other words, when we have a 900 square feet, is that, has to be 900 square feet? Or is it a minimum of 900 square feet?
Sure. So the, you know, there's, say there for, there's three dwelling units. There's the principal dwelling. We'll call that the existing structure on the property. There's the protected use ADU, and then there's a local ADU. So the principal dwelling is a, is a building, a structure that has just one dwelling unit in it. So it doesn't have to be only a single-family home. So any structure in our residential zoning districts and the town's residential zoning districts that has one dwelling unit, whether that's a single-family, a two-family, you know, an apartment building, townhouses, that's the principal dwelling. And the state says that a protected ADU is half the gross floor area of the principal dwelling, so the entire building, not the unit, the, the principal dwelling, or 900 square feet, whichever is smaller. And so if you only have a small, single-family home, say that's 1,700 gross square feet, you can't get a 900-square-foot protected use ADU. You get half of 1,700, which is 800. You get half of seventeen hundred, which is, uh, eight hundred and fifty gross square feet. But a basement counts towards your gross square feet. So when you're taking the gross square foot measurement of your principal dwelling, if you have a basement, that counts towards the square feet. So if you, you, most homes, if it's a, you know, twelve hundred square foot ranch, you usually have a twelve hundred square foot basement in, in math, in Amherst. And so really you have a tw- twenty-four hundred square foot building, and that's only for this ADU calculation, right? This is just what the state said. So it doesn't apply to other, you know, uses in our bylaw. So you essentially have a twenty-four hundred square foot ranch. So you can get a nine hundred square foot protected ADU. A local ADU, we define as something that's bigger than a protected use up to twelve hundred square feet. So if someone wants to create a local ADU, they would first calculate what their, you know, their principal dwelling size is. Then they would know what their protected ADU would be. And then anything bigger than that, up to twelve hundred gross square feet, could be a local ADU. The one difference is for local ADU, we exempted basements. You know, staff felt that having basements count towards the gross square feet is odd. Uh, typically, you know, basements are used for storage. So we, in, in for local ADU, we say an unfinished basement used for storage is not factored into the gross square foot calculation. You know, so that allows someone to put their heating or cooling or water heater down there or storage, and it doesn't count towards the twelve hundred square feet.
But a- again,
Right.
just, just if, if you have a protected ADU, it can't be more than nine hundred square foot.
Yes. Uh, yeah. So no matter what, nine hundred is the ceiling uh, of what it could be.
Okay. And twelve hundred is the ceiling on the
Local. Yes. So we allow up to a thousand square feet of habitable space now for an ADU. Which, you know, gross square feet, it could be, you know, pretty similar to twelve hundred. It's probably a little smaller. Uh, but we, you know, we allow a bigger ADU now than nine hundred. So most of the ADUs that have been permitted in town in the last twenty years, a lot of them are a thousand square feet.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, uh, Anna.
Thanks. Uh, I'm just sitting here, uh, my house is in the nine hundred square foot ballpark, and I'm just curious when I can put in my eighteen hundred foot, uh, square foot ADU. Um, but maybe that gets at my, my next point about scale. Um, but, so the piece that you said, Nate, about it, the decision being up to who's reviewing it is exactly why I'm uncomfortable with this. I, one's pursuit of design on an ADU on their own property that otherwise conforms to all other regulations should not be up to who happens to be seated on a board at any given time. And Nate, I'm speaking at you generally, but know that this is not directed at you specifically. Um, these are just my, my general thoughts. So if my house has a gambrel roof and I hate them, which I do, but the board decides that anything else on my ADU would be considered incompatible, I'm now forced to do a design style that I really can't stand in my ADU because otherwise they're not going to allow it. That feels like overreach. It feels like the town playing HOA or one board specifically getting to play HOA, and we are not an HOA. Uh, I am prepared to move to amend this, uh, this document by striking that paragraph entirely. Uh, and I recognize that this is a carryover, that this is not something that you added in. But hey, it's in front of us, so now we get to talk about it. Um, and I, I can't support this while that paragraph remains in it. I recognize that everything else in it, we need to do. Um, and so I hope that we can have a bit more of a conversation about that one piece as a council and, and come to a conclusion on it.
Sure. If I could, the, um, so, you know, if the local ADU is the first accessory dwelling unit on the property, it's allowed by administrative review. So, you know, there's a section in the bylaw that describes that process and allows the building commissioner to use design review standards. And so we could remove this and there's still the ability for the building commissioner or they're designated to apply some design review. If this is the second ADU on the property, it goes to a special permit by the zoning board. In section ten point three eight of the zoning bylaw has this in there as part of what the zoning board does. And so they, they always, you know, if they're looking at accessory dwelling units or duplexes, you know, the part of the zoning bylaw criteria is, you know, its relationship to the neighboring structures in terms of setbacks, design standard, uh, other things. And so, you know, in that instance, the zoning board does have that discretion through a special permit to have the design review standards apply. And so, you know, that being said, I'm okay with this being removed. There are provisions in the bylaw that still need to be met, whether it's by administrative review or by special permit. And so I just, I just want to let you know that the zoning board does also look at, you know, often looks at design as part of, part of the use, as part of the discretionary permit in the bylaw standards.
Oh, I know. Um, I think my, my issue with this part is conforming to the principal structure specifically. I think I have other issues with the other, um, design requirements, uh, in terms of neighborhoods, but, uh, I won't tackle that right now. For me, it's specifically conforming to the principal structure, um, I have issue with.
Well, that's, yeah, that's, yeah, that's fair.
Jennifer?
Yeah, I have two responses. I think where, I wasn't on the council. I mean, you and I weren't when the original ADU bylaw was adopted that I guess had that language, but I think some of where it's coming from is, again, because we're, you know, a university town, a num- you know, the thought was eh, construction that, you know, is being built often to be rented to, that if it was going to be investor driven, that what would be built, what was whatever was the cheapest, you know, not, I've, I've read that your children's book, I read to my grand, the book you mentioned, I read to my grandchildren all the time. But I think it wasn't thinking of people that wanted to express their individuality, but people who were looking to build something for the least amount, you know, to get the greatest return on investment. So I think that's what was thought when the permitting board would look at the design, that a cinder block box wasn't being put up. Um, but as Nate said, there's other ways to that that could be addressed. But I, I think that in our town, that's the context in which that may have come about for the original, um, ADU bylaw.
Kathy?
I, I'm just joining on, uh, Anna's questioning this particular one, just only to point out that the way the local ADU is written right now, uh, there's no reference to the size of the principal dwelling. So the twelve hundred feet could be bigger than the principal dwelling, the way it's written. It, it, the original way back when was fifty percent of the size of the original up to. Now, at one point, the planning board had ninety percent of the principal up to, um, whichever is smaller. So the, the version you're seeing, potentially you could have a nine hundred square foot principal dwelling and a twelve hundred square foot accessory, which is an interesting definition of accessory. If you think about it, the accessory is larger, but the accessory at some point could become principal, you know, it's, it's, so these are intertwined with the complexity of these two different definitions where the pro- projected, uh, the state law really prohibits you from saying much about them other than size. Um, and the only other point I want to make is Nate was describing this change to a definition of what we're even counting. The state, for some reason, counts a basement, but does not count an attic, regardless of the size of the attic. Um, so you have some leeway in nine hundred square feet to be, to build an attic that potentially can become another finished floor. But it doesn't count at the point you're doing the nine hundred. And not only does it not count, it says excludes the attic. So it, 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 it references so that, I'm not sure what the state, well, they have in mind urban areas where there's another smaller unit built right next to the bigger unit. And it could be very close to the bigger unit, the way the dimensions are. So there's, there's two levels of the complexity. That's all I want to say, Anna, that the accessory could be larger. So the language that says, so its appearance would somehow work with the principal. It doesn't, I don't think that means it has to have the same roof design. If you did it next to our house, it would mean you have to have a slate roof. But we have a milk shed, because it was a, it was, it used to be a dairy farm. So our milk shed could be an accessory building if it had a lot more than it has now. So that's what I'm saying is that it's, this local could be quite large relative to the principal.
Anna?
Oh, Kathy, I know. That's, that, that was my initial thought when I was clarifying that I could put in a structure larger than my actual home as my ADU and my property. I, I think what I just want to mention is that I understand, Jennifer, I get what you're saying, Kathy, I understand what you're saying in terms of what, the context in which folks start talking about these things. And on the same hand, the laws apply to all of us. We can't, unfortunately, uh, this sounds wild, but we can't rely on common sense when it comes down to interpreting the letter of laws as they're written. And so I understand that there is a specific context by which this came about and a specific intention by which, at which it's aimed, but it's not the only place it's applied. And so when these, these laws are applied to all of us, that means that they impact all of us. And Kathy, yeah, it might not be as specific as my somewhat flippant roof answer, but we have seen examples where folks are required to change siding, uh, material or required to, you know, there's things like that that are enforced. And so while it may not exactly be that, it could. And so for me, I'm just trying to make sure that we're eh, this was something I almost brought at GOL because I was trying to figure out if this was clarity, consistency and actionability, because for me, and, and at GOL, we decided I would bring this to council, because for me, this is not clear. Um, there's so much fuzziness in this and it's so much at the whims of whomever is making the decision. Uh, while I get, Jennifer, what you're saying, that it's intended to stop folks from just slapping up hideous concrete structures. One, is it their right to put up hideous concrete structures on their property, uh, regardless of who's in them? And, and two, it could be used in so many other ways. And so for me, I think we either need to be much more specific or cut this out entirely. And I am not prepared to figure out the specifics, uh, because I feel like that is over regulation. So, uh, I believe I will wait until the second reading to make that amendment, but uh, the council can be prepared for me to bring that amendment at our next read, uh, at our next meeting.
Nate?
Sure. Yeah. No, I think it's, like I said, the planning board discussed this and they kind of had the same line of questioning. Uh, you know, how much is too much? So, you know, you say the same architectural style, and then you're really limiting it to, if you have a Cape style house, you have to have a Cape style accessory dwelling unit. And so, you know, it's really difficult to have, um, you know, a general standard or condition that can capture all the variables. You know, and so, you know, we don't typically issue design guidelines for additions to single family homes or duplexes. We don't, um, you know, unless it's a special permit use, there really isn't any, any design standard that's applied to, you know, one, two, one and two family, uh, units, sometimes even, you know, um, smaller apartments, right? Depending on what the permit allows or says. So, you know, the board did discuss this and, you know, I think they did respond to what Jennifer was saying as well, that, well, this, you know, there is some, there's some, um, you know, there's some guidance here for the permit granting authority or the, you know, staff to use. Um, and I agreed, it doesn't say exactly what that means to be compatible or, you know, have their appropriate scale or appearance. And so I don't read it as saying you have to have vinyl siding, if you have vinyl siding on your house or asphalt shingles, but you know, could someone say that? You know, I think this isn't a local historic district, this isn't strict, right? So in a local historic district, an accessory dwelling unit still has to meet the standards of those, uh, of those rules and regulations. And so there was one proposed, um, you know, on the corner of, uh, Lincoln and Fearing. And the local historic district changed the pitch of the roof, the siding and requested that porticoes be added. And there were a few changes to it that, you know, everyone felt was a, a, you know, an improvement. So to me, that's not what this condition is saying, that you have to then put a portico on your front entry. Um, you know, it doesn't have to match what's in the neighborhood necessarily. So I, it, I, again, it, I, I could, you know, I feel like I could talk either side of it, right? Like what, you know, how is it, how does it work? But I think it's really difficult to have a design standard capture everything without having a, you know, a really prescriptive set of conditions.
Are there any other questions of Nate for the moment? And I'm going to, at this point, ask for Jennifer, uh, to just quickly, uh, make any comments about the CRC review.
Uh, thank you, Lynn. So I'd actually written something up. Nate covered all of them eh, better than I would have. So I don't have, um, a lot to add. Uh, Nate did a great job covering it. I would just say that um, in CRC, we did have a discussion about parking, which, like Anna, I may bring at the next meeting, um, as a, as an amendment, I would, would say friendly, but um, that the, and there, with this, the protected use ADU that's the state, there is very little room for tweaking. It's just the state, there's very little we can do. The state's very clear about that. And the state was concerned that eh, that local municipalities not put burdensome parking requirements on, on building an ADU. And there was a con- so, eh, we, in CRC, the planning board had said we couldn't require more than three spaces. And in CRC, we voted to reduce that to two, which I think was good. I personally would like it to be one parking space for AD, for the protected use ADU that's being built within, um, a half mile or of, um, public transportation. Because what you have is, and, you know, people have been even writing to the council about this, is if you, eh, many houses, even if they don't have large driveways, I mean, you could have four cars parked in the, I mean, right now you can do that. You can have four cars for the primary dwelling. So it's, if you add two more parking spaces, you're creating a six-space parking lot. And we're starting to see in terms of just green space of backyards being paved over, um, to allow for more parking spaces. And insofar as we would really like to encourage people to use to, public transportation or not to be so car dependent, that maybe only you know, having five cars for two houses could be preferable than having six. But that, that would be for another discussion. But that's, again, where the CRC and the planning board is recommendations, CRC changed that recommendation from the planning board.
Okay. Kathy, uh, is this a question of CRC or can I go on to GOL?
Uh, it's just to point out that if people are reading the planning board version and the CRC version, this is the one difference. The three, eh, three, and then we deleted the second sentence so that if you go down to that provision, you'll see those two are different. So that's all I want to point out. One has three, one has two, and the three has the second sentence about the protected use that the CRC version doesn't have.
Okay. Uh, Anna, GOL?
GOL voted to find this clear, consistent and actionable. We did not have significant changes to this, um, document as it was put forward. I think we had maybe some minor wording, but, um, for the most part, we thought it was clear because we, we voted. We didn't even just think it. We voted it, clear, consistent and actionable.
Okay. Um, I want to just mention, uh, since two people have mentioned potential, um, amendments to the bylaw, uh, when it comes up on November third, please make sure that you have sent those amendments to Athena and me in advance and that we work with you on the statement of the amendment. Uh, the other piece is that we want to make sure that if we need the planning department, uh, Nate and specifically, uh, with all of his expertise on this area, uh, to come in, uh, we need to make sure he's prepared in advance. Uh, Councilor Hanke.
I just want to give a counter opinion to changing no more than two onsite parking spaces provided for any ADU to, um, what Jennifer just suggested is no more than one. CRC did talk about it. I'm against going below two. Um, I took a leap of faith going from three to two because, um, planning in general, you know, sort of good planning, um, recommendations are to put pa- parking maximums in, not parking minimums. Um, but this is a section that applies to both local and protected ADUs, which means it applies to ADUs that could be twelve hundred square feet that might be occupied by a family with two adults that are working outside of Amherst that may need two vehicles to get to those jobs because there isn't public transportation to either job, even if there is a public transportation bus stop within a half mile of where the ADU is located.
Thank you. Uh, Jennifer, you had your hand up?
Yes, but then Counselor Hanke did mention the half mile. So I want to be clear that I was talking about protected use ADUs within a half mile of public transportation.
Okay. Nate?
Here, I just want to clarify, so in the, in the bylaw, proposed bylaw, we say parking space. And so, you know, in the zoning bylaw, we don't, you know, a driveway or drive aisle is not part of a parking space. And so I just want to be clear that when we say parking space, really, it's a, you know, it's some area that's paved, you know, that is of a, you know, an improved surface that's really just for parking. And so when staff wrote this, we wanted to be clear that, you know, if you have a double wide driveway and it's, you know, 80 feet long, you still can, you know, stack cars in and have five or six or however many cars fit in that driveway. And this is really additional parking spaces to serve the ADU. I think, you know, generically speaking, it's really hard to tell what, you know, vehicle serves what, what unit on a property. And so, you know, if someone, you know, if, if we were to have a limitation on this, which there's three right now or two, depending on the version, you know, it's something that staff would have to ask an applicant about. And, you know, because it's a parking space, depending on their parking layout, we could then have a discussion with the applicant. You know, if they're just saying, well, we have a big driveway and here's where we park now and that's how we're going to continue to park, there's really no enforcement mechanism on that. I just, you know, I just want to be clear that is, you know, it's really just the parking space area. So for instance, if they were creating, you know, a 1,200 square foot local ADU and then they had, you know, were allowed a second driveway curb cut and then they, you know, created, you know, line parking, now you could say, okay, well, those are the parking spaces. And so then we have a maximum of three for that, you know, on that property. So I just, you know, it's not a driveway, it's the parking spaces. So you could have, you know, a two car driveway and to me, that's not three parking spaces, that's just a driveway.
Are there any other questions or comments at this time? This is the first reading. Bob?
Yeah, I just, I've been thinking about the half mile standard and I'm 73 years old. If I had to walk a half a mile with a bag full of groceries, it would be a problem. And I'm not bound, I'm not wheelchair bound. I, I think we should just eliminate that altogether. I mean, it, it's irrelevant and too many people, whether it's a half mile or a quarter mile or a mile. And I don't, I think it's an arbitrary designation that really doesn't fit the needs of people.
Nate?
Yeah, sorry, the, so the, this is from the state regulation, so I, I think we really need to leave it in. And so I think, you know, when the state said you have to allow this protected use ADU on a property, they thought that some communities will require two parking spaces per unit. And then if you don't have, you know, in urban areas, if you have small lots, you can actually then deny the ADU because you could say, oh, well, you can't get two additional parking spaces. And so this, the regulation reads, you know, and what we really have in our bylaw is there's no additional parking space shall be required for a protected use ADU within one half mile of a commuter rail or bus stop. And so that's actually, you know, almost, you know, is paraphrasing state regulation. And that's for a protected ADU. So if we take that out, that means someone could require a parking space for an ADU, which is against the state regulation. And so if you're within a half mile of a bus stop, you know, so it's really any PVTA bus stop, you can't require on, you know, an additional parking space for a protected use ADU. And that's, that's state regulation. So we can't change that.
Counselor Hanke? Bob, did you have a comment?
No, that's, that's fair enough. But I mean, I, I think for, for the local ADU, I, I really don't see any reason to keep that. I just don't see a, it's just not relevant for many people.
Counselor Hanke?
I'm just going to try and clarify a few things. So we're talking about two different parts of the bylaw right now. There is a statement in the protected use ADU section that is no parking space shall be required within a half mile. That is basically pulled directly from state regulations. We can't change that. We cannot require. What Nate explained to CRC and Planning Board was, that doesn't mean they can't build. Someone who proposes a protected use ADU can still propose to put in parking. We just, as a town, cannot require that they put it in, in order to get the permit. Then there's the section that Jennifer and I were talking about, which is letter I in the section above that applies to both protected use and local use ADUs, which is you, we are saying you cannot put in more than two onsite parking per ADU. So we can't require any, but we're saying you can't put in four or five. You can put in up to two for either protected, whether it's a protected use or a local. And in that sense, I absolutely agree, Bob, with you that whether you're within a half mile or not, we've got the state regulation that says you can't require it, but even people living within a half mile of a bus stop may not be able to, even if that bus is right on time with where they go to work and is a perfect schedule for them, may not be able to utilize it because of their mobility challenges or the fact that after work they have to go pick up a kid that is located somewhere else, right? And I think we have to recognize that and allow it at, up to that two for even 900 square foot ADUs, let alone 1,200 square foot ADUs, because we cannot assume, no matter how much some people would like to assume, that all ADUs will be occupied by students because they're not always occupied by students and young people. They are sometimes occupied by parents of the people living in the primary unit. That's the one that's behind my house, is occupied by parents of the people living in the primary unit that are, you know, in their 60s and 70s. And probably shouldn't limit them to one parking space if they wanted to put in up to two.
Jennifer?
Yeah, and I, what is the situat, the, we're, we're not talking about a, at least dwelling having one parking space. It's two together. And, you know, in much of District Four, there are, because we're a general residence district, that is, you know, we have much smaller lots, we don't need as big a lot to be, build a single family house. And because much of the neighborhood is close to the campus, we, there's all, there's been a number of, we've probably had more activity in applications for building permits for protected use ADUs. And in District Four, to date, and we're not living where some of you live in outline areas where you have a lot of space. So it's been, the applications have been for ADUs for students on the same lot as the primary house is rented to four students. And there's, you know, no limit, we can't impose a limit on the occupancy in the protected use ADU. So there has been a concern, these are small lots that already house four cars, so we're, it's not really limiting it to one, it's trying to limit it to five or, or six. And, you know, we will, we could live, I'm not going to die over whether it's one or two, but I'm saying that is what we are talking about. There have been basically parking lots and these are small lots. So you have the primary and the accessory dwelling unit, the protected use. There's already, always been four cars parked in the primary on a small lot. And then if, you know, now we're talking about having six. And what they, you know, the concern was, once you have seven or eight, that most of the green space is being paved over, it's lots of light shining, you know, late at night. So we're, you know, the concern was coming from the area where there's most interest in adding the protected use ADU, at least thus far, in the zoning district that already has the smallest lots and the greatest density. So just trying to give some context, I'm certainly, whether we allow one or two is not the sword I think anyone's going to die on.
Pat?
Yeah, Nate, I have a question that Jennifer made me realize I'd like an answer to. How many permits have been requested for protected ADUs? She said everyone that, all these, there are a lot of them or something, I'm not sure quite how you said it, Jen. How many permits have been requested?
Sure, yeah, I think there's, I think there's been about 15, 12 to 15 that have been applied for since March 1st. You know, I think only two or three have been issued. One or two have actually been to reconfirm existing ADUs as protected use ADUs, so minor modifications to an ADU that was already built. So, you know, I think there's only been two permits issued for, you know, new, new construction. I think there's been some confusion on the part of applicants, you know, what's required. So when this first came out and you said, oh, it's by right, you just need to get a building permit, I think applicants thought that they could apply without plans or minimal plans and build an ADU. But, you know, we're still, you know, we still require, I mean, most communities are certainly required, you know, plans and a bunch of things to get a building permit. So it's been a slow process, but I think, you know, so, you know, in Jennifer, in the neighborhood that she mentioned, there have been a few permits and there's been a few scattered around town. I think, you know, I think, you know, I don't, I can't say where the, I haven't, I didn't, I didn't actually look at where the concentration is. You know, there's some in outlying areas and there's some in the, in the town center area. I think, you know, as more people learn, we're going to get more applications. So I know there's one down on College Street, there's some down in South Amherst, there's someone asking in North Amherst, you know, they're just around. I, you know, staff sees this as a good thing that, you know, more people are getting, asking. I can't, you know?
Yes, I think you're right, it's a good thing and it also seems that it's spread out. So I'm trying to understand why, what, I don't want any one district in town to so affect every other district with, because of their own personal preferences. We need to build more housing in Amherst. And I think that's a laudatory goal.
Are there any other questions or comments?
Yes, sorry, I just want to jump in quickly to that point. So, yeah, this bylaw applies townwide, right? There's no, you know, it's not zoning, you know, district specific. And so, you know, that's what the state wants. And so, you know, you know, in, in, in Amherst, and the way they define it is, in any single family residential zoning district that allows a principal dwelling, allows a dwelling unit, you have to allow a protected use ADU. In Amherst, that's all of our residential zoning districts. So in some communities, they would, they allow, you know, dwelling units in, say, an industrial zone or, you know, commercial zones. And so now, a single family home, so now they would have to allow ADUs in those zones. The zoning in Amherst isn't, you know, has never been structured that way. So basically, this bylaw would apply in all the residential zoning districts. So any property that has a principal dwelling, so it's a structure with at least one dwelling unit, whether it's a single family, two family or apartment building, what have you, is now allowed a protected use ADU. So, yeah, it's really difficult to have standards that apply when the lots are different sizes throughout town, right? We still have our dimensional standards, so you can't cover more than what you're required to by lot coverage. So, you know, to Jennifer's point, if someone has a small lot and they're adding more parking and more parking and the town receives a complaint, you know, we have our lot and building coverage standards in our bylaw. So that's what we would use to determine, you know, are they in violation of something? You know, we don't, we only allow two cars to be parked in the front setback. So, you know, are they, you know, are they in violation of that? And so there are other standards that could apply in our bylaw that we would, you know, use townwide to address any issues or concerns about, you know, building coverage or lot coverage.
Thank you.
Again, I just want to remind councilors, if you want to make an amendment or propose an amendment at our meeting on November 3rd, please make sure we see it in advance so that we also have the opportunity to have Nate look it over and do exactly what he just did, which was basically say, well, we can't mess with that one because that's the state law. Jennifer?
I just wanted to thank Nate.
Yes, that was my next thing, but please go ahead, Jennifer, and kick it off.
Yeah, no, I just want to thank you very much. It was really, you know, I, I couldn't have given the report without you being here to lend your expertise, so thank you.
Well, and I want to thank Nate for helping the town weave their way through the state law and then also how to have a local law and being able to talk about it so articulate. And by the way, Nate, your sound is much better than it's ever been. I don't know if you've got a new computer, but thank you. We really appreciate it. And I thank you so much for spending the time with us. We're going to go on to the next one, which Nate's here actually to answer any questions. This is the proposed zoning amendment, inclusionary zoning. We, this is the second reading, so I'm going to read the motion. I actually would like the clerk to put the motion up on the screen. And just to go ahead, it's moved to amend Article 15, Section 15.171 by striking out four and replacing with five times and no more than eight and adding the sentence, precise payment amount shall be determined by the permit granting authority with recommendation provided for the housing trust and, from the housing trust and may account for market conditions, total development costs, unit size, project location, cost of postponement in the delivery of affordable units and similar factors as shown below. And then there is a whole nother section that is in fact 15.171. And that goes on, as you can see on the screen, payment of fee in lieu of affordable units may be allowed payable prior to the grant, granting of a certificate of occupancy for any dwelling units associated with the development of the town of Amherst Municipal Affordable Housing Authority. The fee in lieu value for each affordable unit not provided shall be at, striking four, at least five times and no more than eight times the current median family income for Amherst as determined by the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development or successor agency, precise payment amount shall be determined by the permitting authority, et cetera, et cetera. Are there, is there a second?
I'll second, just a scrivener request. I typed this up and skipped a end parentheses after the eight, just to make it clearer in the main motion at the first sentence. It starts and replacing with quote, five times and no more than eight, and then I forgot the end quote after eight.
Oh.
So, just to clarify that.
All right, thank you. Is there, are there any other questions and comments? Again, this is the first, this is the second reading. Counselor Lord?
Thank you. I'm not sure when this bylaw was passed or if I just am beginning to understand things. I'm feeling like this bylaw is harmful to some residents that need affordable housing. And so is this amendment to make it less attractive to do the in lieu of, because now there's more monetary, like, okay, so is this amendment trying to, in my opinion, like, help our residents that need affordable housing more because there's a higher cost associated with waiving having affordable units?
Nate, are you there?
Sure, yes, yeah, thanks. So this has been in the bylaw for a number of years. It was used once recently for the project at 4555 South Pleasant. And so, you know, essentially, developer needs to provide the units in the, affordable units in the project and then they can request a separate special permit to make this provision of, of payment in lieu. And so what this amendment is trying to do is capture what the real value of that unit is, you know, the loss of that affordable unit is to the town. So it is creating a higher, you know, monetary threshold that someone has to provide to be able to, you know, not provide that affordable unit in the project. The idea is to, right, make it, make it, make it worth something, right? So really, the idea is that you would provide the affordable unit in the project or you have to ask for the special permit to try to waive it. And so, you know, this provision is really, right, setting a, you know, a pretty good threshold that has to be met in terms of a monetary payment.
Thank you.
Counselor Lord, follow up question?
No, just a thank you.
Okay. Counselor Ryan?
So I have spoken on this now, I think, twice and I am going to vote for this, but I'm also going to make a public declaration. If this possibility of a payment in lieu is ever realized, I, I want to go on record that publicly I will consume my beloved Irish walking hat. I really think this is going to never be used once we do this. But if it is used, I promise you, I will eat my hat.
It's been used, I, I think, Nate, you said it's been used once, right?
Correct. So the project downtown, you know, in the current bylaw, it just reads, you know, shall be four, which is, you know, the, in the lower paragraph on the screen, that's, you know, that's what's being removed. It just says shall be four times the median family income. And so when it was brought forward, the planning board didn't think that they could ask for more, even though these downtown units, they thought were worth more than four times. And the applicant was, oh, actually- And the applicant was actually willing to pay more than four times, but the bylaw didn't allow for it. And so the planning board, you know, suggested to the housing trust and staff, could you look at this and come up with some, you know, some alternative of how to, you know, create a, calculate a payment in lieu? And so, you know, to the point, I think Georgia said previously, he thinks five to eight's kind of high. You know, you could keep the four in there. That's not what has been recommended, but that's the, the ceiling. It could say four to eight. Um, I, I think that it could be used. I think, you know, if a developer really wants to forego providing affordable units, well, then they have to provide this payment. And so, you know, depending on where the, the size of the units, is it a studio? Is it a three bedroom, its location, the type of project? You know, we're seeing the cost of units, uh, pretty high right now, the per unit cost. And so we think that this calculation, you know, provides the town that necessary payment to then try to generate another affordable unit.
Okay. Uh, again, this is the second reading, so we're going to move to, oh, I made the motion. Did I have a second? Thank you. Okay, uh, we're going to move to the vote. Bob Hegner.
Aye.
Counselor Lord.
Aye.
Counselor Ryan.
Aye.
Kathy Shane.
Yes.
Andy Steinberg.
Aye.
Jennifer Taub.
Yes.
Counselor Walker. Counselor Walker. Okay, I'll come back and try her again in a moment. Uh, Patty Angeles.
Aye.
Anna Devlin-Gothier.
Aye.
Counselor Ette.
Aye.
Lyndy Greasmer's an aye. Counselor Hanke.
Aye.
Counselor Walker, can you hear us? Okay, for the purposes of this vote, she is absent. So the vote is eleven in favor and two absent. Thank you. Uh, the next is a referral. It's, uh, I'm going to read the motion and then I believe Rob Morrow is here with us. And, um, uh, let me just begin with the motion. In accordance with Mass General Law, Chapter forty A, Paragraph five, to refer the proposed change to the zoning map, rezoning parcels fourteen B dash twenty-nine, fourteen B dash thirty and fourteen B dash thirty-one from the general residential district RG to the neighborhood business district BN to the planning board for public hearing within sixty-five days and report to the town council, community, community resources committee for public hearing and recommendation to the town council and to GOAL and governance organization legislation for the final review of clarity, consistency and actionability. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Are there any other questions or comments? Uh, Rob, you're here and Counselor Hanke. Rob, why don't you just give us a quick overview and then I'm going to go to Counselor Hanke.
Hi, uh, Rob Moore, Building Commissioner. Uh, I have a brief presentation. Yep, there it is, thank you. Uh, if we can go right to the next slide. Uh, this is our, uh, proposal to amend the zoning bylaw called the BN expansion. Uh, this is a map change only. There's no language changes being proposed in the bylaw. Uh, it includes three parcels that'll change from the RG general residence district to the BN neighborhood business district. And those parcels, uh, are known as two twenty-nine, two fifty-seven and two eighty-five Main Street. And I'll talk a little bit about each of those in a minute. Um, except if there's some change to the physical site required by code, uh, there are no, no changes, uh, proposed to these properties or being proposed to these properties. And it expands on an existing parcel that is standalone in the BN zone, uh, there at the corner of Dickinson and Main Street. And, uh, just so everybody is aware, all of these three properties are located in the Dickinson Local Historic District. Uh, next slide, please. So, uh, results will be.
Next, next slide, please.
Yep, um, results will be modest, um, but could be meaningful with this change, uh, with the stated goals and supporting a business that, uh, could, could use some support uh, by this change that I'll talk about in a minute and creating a, uh, appropriate transition from the general residence district, uh, and utilizing the main corridor for increased housing density and, and some smaller non-residential opportunities. Next slide, please. Earlier in the year, I, I did, um, present this, this idea as a zoning change to the CRC in a general update and as well to the planning board. Um, I've had discussions with each of the, the owners of the properties that this bylaw would, uh, change would affect and then prepared to, uh, present it to the town manager to gain his support and ask him to, uh, initiate the process for a, uh, zoning amendment consideration. Uh, neighbors are beginning to discuss this a little bit and I have offered to attend a neighborhood meeting to answer any questions and I, um, I'm expecting that'll likely happen in the coming weeks. Um, and, and very much aware and sensitive to the fact that, uh, most of the abutting properties to these three parcels we're talking about are owner occupied properties. Next slide, please. Uh, this image, uh, shows our current zoning map. And if you can find Dickinson Street, uh, on the map, uh, just west of Dickinson, uh, on the corner of Main and Dickinson is the standalone spot of BN, that parcel right there with the white background. Uh, we're talking about each of the three parcels to the west of that, to the left shown on this map, uh, and all of that yellow background is general residence RG district. Uh, next slide, please. So, uh, closest to Dickinson Street, uh, outlined in blue, uh, the first parcel, the smallest parcel of the three that are outlined in blue, uh, that's two eighty-five Main Street. That's an existing, uh, six-unit apartment building. It's a pre-existing non-conforming use. It was recently, within the last few years, completely rebuilt, uh, following a fire, uh, fully updated with code compliant life safety systems and finishes and, uh, you know, everything reconstructed, including the, uh, the pavement and the parking area surrounding, uh, the building. Uh, the next parcel, uh, to the west, the largest parcel of the three, uh, that is the Amherst Inn, uh, location. Uh, that's the, uh, property that really motivated this discussion, uh, to take place, uh, this spring and get us thinking about looking at this section. Uh, this property has a permit, a special permit from nineteen ninety-seven to operate as an accessory use bed and breakfast, uh, accessory to a dwelling. Uh, that comes with, uh, some, some pretty strict, uh, limitations. Uh, no more than four to six guests, uh, owner occupancy, uh, and, and other, uh, restrictions on, uh, on the operation and management of the operation. Uh, this, uh, earlier this year, uh, in a routine inspection, fire services, visiting the property, uh, informed the owner that they were under a requirement to install sprinkler and fire alarm systems because, uh, they lease rooms to more than five guests. Uh, in fact, what they, what they determined was that, um, there are eight guest rooms in the building and would far exceed that number five, uh, that is the threshold in the fire regulations. Uh, and then I became involved in, and started looking at the zoning limitations and found that in fact, um, there isn't really an opportunity to expand beyond that number five, uh, for guests, uh, maximum guests because of the zoning, uh, limitations. There isn't any possibility in the RG district to, uh, to have a bed and breakfast with, uh, more occupants. So what that does, um, effectively is, um, you know, it, it challenges the owner to make the improvements the fire department is asking for because they are so limited on the, uh, the number of guest rooms that they could rent at one time. Uh, so we were, are in part, in part looking for a solution to that, that problem. Uh, the last parcel to the west, uh, to twenty-nine Main Street is an existing, uh, pre-existing non-conforming owner occupied duplex. Uh, again, uh, nothing being proposed, uh, for changes to those, uh, properties. Uh, next slide, please. This is what, uh, the map, the new map would look like if it were to be adopted. That shows all four parcels, all three parcels added to the one existing BN to expand the, the neighborhood business district. Uh, so I am, uh, you know, here asking for referral at this point. Um, fully prepared to answer any questions, uh, relative to the differences between RG, BN, uh, why I recommended BN instead of BBC, uh, any potential scenarios that could, you know, potentially happen with properties in the future, permitting and approvals. I think those will all be good discussions in committee and planning board review. Uh, but I'm happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Okay. Um, we can take that down, I believe, at this point. And I'm looking for questions from the council. Counselor Hanke.
Yeah, um, I think it makes a lot of sense to do this. So I thank Rob for bringing it forward and the manager for bringing it forward. Um, it's not really a question, more like a comment. The timing seems very strange to me because we have strict timings on when hearings can be held. And then those hearings will be started in this council, potentially ended in this council. Hopefully through GOAL if they're ended in this council by the end of the year because then there's a strict voting timeline to get it past all of that. Yet we're completely switching our committees right in the middle of potentially what will be a strict timeline for when we have to have a first and second reading. So, um, it's, it's more of a, an oddity on that. Um, and more of a comment of the manager and whoever is elected president and appoints committees, some of these committees might need to be up and running extremely quickly to make sure we don't miss deadlines regarding this.
Are there any other questions or comments?
Can, can we speak to that?
Yes.
Um, we've had conversations with Rob and Dave and Nate about the timing of these, um, this proposal and decided that it made more sense to bring it now and hope that the council could act on it before the end of the year since it's a very straightforward proposal and there is the one property that's kind of waiting for a decision on this zoning change.
Can I comment?
Please.
So it takes, as you know, three weeks to even get the notices in the paper from today to even hold a hearing. Um, and we need two readings. So, um, have you been in contact with the chair of CRC? And has Rob been in contact with the planning board chair to make sure those hearing notices are going to go out like this week? So that you can get the hearings in, in November for the, cause then it's supposed to go to GOAL and we only have two meetings in December scheduled.
I, I can't speak to Rob's conversations with Counselor Rooney. Um, but, but my understanding is that she's aware that the, the amendment was on its way and we will keep things moving as quickly as we can once it's referred.
And, and we do know that the, the planning board agenda or, uh, meeting agendas are available as we would need them to be. So we're, we're confident that we could, you know, optimistic that we could take a, uh, a shot at, uh, having this scheduled in time.
Okay, uh, Kathy.
Just to, um, build on Counselor Hanke's questions about timing, I also think it's preferable to, that CRC and planning board do the hearing at the same time. I thought it was a, a bit of a duplicate of effort, the way we did ADU and I understood what happened with it on the timing. But to gather the public comments at the hearing with one hearing would, I think, be better. So the timing issue that was raised is, is, is there a time that CRC and the planning board can do a meeting together, uh, on this? Um, cause we meet on different days of the week and at different time slots. So I'm, I'm just raising that. I, I thought it was, uh, we, we called it a hearing in CRC, but people didn't come because they'd already come to the planning board hearing, um, the way it ended up working. So that's an additional complexity to each of the time blocks that Counselor Hanke raised.
We can talk about that with the chairs. We've been unsuccessful in trying to do that in the past. We have attempted to, but we can, we can certainly have that discussion in the following days.
Jennifer.
Yeah, we could, we still have the forty-eight hours to add it to the CRC agenda for this Thursday afternoon and we have space on the agenda, we could do that.
You can't add a hearing, a hearing needs.
No, no, but I mean, we could add it, yeah, no, I know, but.
You can certainly talk about scheduling and your future agenda items. Okay. Uh, Paul.
So I think one of the goals for tonight was if there were any councilors who felt like, oh, this is going to be problematic for me or there are questions. It's the first time you're seeing it, so I recognize that. But in terms of the ambitious schedule, which we sort of considered and thought, if, as Rob said, if we, if everything goes right, we can get it through this council. But if there are councilors who say, oh, I see a problem with this, we should know. It would be helpful to know that sooner than later.
Kathy.
Well, I, I don't have a major problem with it, but if you look at the map you presented, it is odd. Um, and I understand from the reading, the rationale, there's one particular building that could be more effectively used, but it doesn't fit the definition that we've imposed on that building because of where it sits. And I actually had people who, at an event, who stated that building where all the rooms were occupied. So apparently has sometimes worked in a way that the definition of inn doesn't fit at bed and breakfast. So I understood why you were doing this, but if you look at the map, we're carving out a few pieces. So I don't know whether it'll be problematic in a general public hearing. Paul's question is, is it a problem? It's just, it's just odd when you look at it.
So, can I address that?
Please, go ahead.
Yeah, so, you know, it is a, a small step to the bigger picture. Uh, you know, we do have plans and we've always been discussing, uh, the downtown zoning and what, where do the boundaries start, where do they end? And, and, you know, how does that get broken up or even adding additional, uh, districts over time? And I, in looking at this, I felt like that particular section worked well as we define BN, as that transition of moderate density, mix of possibly small non-residential uses, uh, when transitioning out of the BG district and, and directly surrounded by residential, uh, properties and residential districts is how, how the, the, the zone is defined. So I thought it actually worked a little bit better, uh, for that and something we would want to do. It's, it, this isn't, wasn't a new idea to, to create BN in that area. This particular situation with this business owner definitely switched around the priorities as far as bringing it forward sooner than, than maybe we were ready to, uh, if we were waiting for the, the bigger picture review of the BG. That's why the church was left out. Uh, there was no reason to raise alarm to what, you know, might or could happen on a church property. There's absolutely nothing being proposed. I've never heard of any discussions, uh, but it'll be an interesting conversation someday as to about whether or not that property should be part of BG, part of BN or something else. Uh, so we actually feel like this is, uh, an appropriate change, you know, looking at what we see for the bigger scope of the, the transition out of the town center.
I just want to mention to the council that the questions you've raised about timing, I did raise an agenda review. And, uh, that's, thus the question of if there's any real serious objection to this, we probably should just have it withdrawn at this time and bring it back at a later time. Uh, the reality is that in order to do a zoning amendment, you have to have two readings. The first one would have to be on December first and the second one on December fifteenth. Okay? Are there any other questions or comments? So the motion is to refer. Motion's been made and seconded. All right, Counselor Lord.
Aye.
Counselor Ryan.
Aye.
Kathy Shane.
Yes.
Andy Steinberg.
Aye.
Jennifer Taub.
Yes.
Counselor Walker. Patty Angeles.
Aye.
Anna Devlin-Gothier.
Aye.
Counselor Ette.
Aye.
Lyndy Greasmer's an aye. Counselor Hanke.
Aye.
Bob Hegner.
Aye.
Uh, and Counselor Walker, I'm going to try one more time. And Councilor Walker, I'm going to try one more time. Okay, it's 11 in favor and two absent. We have one more action item. I'm going to read the motion. Rob, thank you for your presentation and maps, et cetera. They're very helpful.
Thanks, Sarah.
The next one is to eliminate one parking place immediately to the east of driveway for 151 Amity Street and request that the Department of Public Works investigate adjusting parking places in an appropriate manner to address the safety issues that may have been raised by the residents. Is there a second? Second, De Angelis. Andy, I'm going to go to you for the T S O report.
Yes, I sent the T S O report on Sunday and I hope that everyone has had an opportunity to read it. And again, apologize that the short time between Thursday meeting and when it had to be sent to the clerk of the council caused a delay. To just quickly summarize it and then open it up to, just if there are any questions, is that we had both Chief Ting and Superintendent Mooreing there. Both spoke in favor of it in giving advice to T S O. And it was, in the end, a question of safety. It is a very awkward driveway for visionists, particularly to the left. As cars are coming down from downtown and library going downhill. And you have, drivers have to nose their car out because of the number of spaces that are in that area. Because it's a multi-unit condominium, the type of arrangement. There can be as many as 10 cars parked in the lot, which means that it adds to the danger for something happening. We looked at the accident reports. We have the pictures that were provided from the driver's position that are posted in the packet for T S O for that meeting. But based upon all of those reasons, committee voted unanimously with one member absent to recommend that the one place be removed and that D P W, as was offered by Superintendent Mooreing, make an effort the next time the D P W is repainting the parking places that as they move, if they can rearrange the spaces in order to gain back the space that they do so. And Counselor Taub was the sponsor. She is a member of T S O. And if she has anything to add, I'm sure she'll raise her hand.
Jennifer, did you have anything to add?
No, Andy covered it very well.
Thank you. Counselor Hanke?
Yeah, I just find the wording of the motion very strange, especially with the statements from the committee and the D P W director that they'll attempt to add a space back in. Because the motion is eliminate a space. So what does that mean when you reline and go back? You know, right now it looks like it's got four spaces in that section between the driveways. You eliminate down to three and then you create back to four. I guess, I mean, I'm going to vote for it, but I think in the future, our motions should be clearer with what type of distance do we want from the driveway edge to the first parking space? Because that hasn't been really discussed at all in any of the reports. Or from what, what it sounds like, T S O might have discussed during the meeting. Did they discuss what a minimum distance between that driveway and where the first car should line be? Because to me, I think it would make a lot more sense if we created, just say, no parking between that line and 15 feet or 10 feet or pick a number. So I just find the wording of this motion extremely strange and would prefer, in the future, that we be more clear with what the distance between the edge of a driveway and the first parking space should be.
Okay. Are there any, Counselor Ryan?
So I'm going to support this and I hope my colleagues will too. But I just want to point out to you all that we are setting a precedent. This was also discussed at T S O. There are a number of other driveways, both on this side and on the other side of the street. For instance, the dental office, where I have the same problem. And so when, when and if they come to us for a similar request, we're going to have a hard time saying no. And pretty soon you're not going to have any parking spaces on the other side of the street. So I'm not sure how to resolve that, but I can certainly sympathize with the residents of the of the condo. It is a very difficult and dangerous place to come out. But there are a number of other places on the street where that's also true.
Absolutely. Andy?
So in response to both of the last two points that were made, I think that the report states that we asked that question of Superintendent Mooreing about the space distance and whether there are any standards. And his response was that there are, but they're variable depending upon a number of circumstances that he named. And so it was difficult for us to come up with a minimum distance, given the response that we had, because he didn't provide the answer that was how those various standards would apply to this particular street. As far as the, we did recognize the point that Counselor Ryan raised. But we also were looking at the fact that most of the driveways are single on that side of the street, which is the one that we were most concerned about because of the direction the traffic is coming from. That it was a situation where there were 10 cars potentially in that one driveway, that it was just the number of cars added to all of the other factors. But we do recognize, as Counselor Ryan said, that it does open up the possibility that there will be future requests. And I think that either the council or if it's created the Transportation Parking Committee Commission is going to have to tackle that issue and see if it can, if if more clear standards are developed.
Thank you. Counselor Lord?
I wanted to mention in response to Counselor Ryan's comment that this particular request is coming from a place that has five units. So it's, I know we might start to get individual ones, but I took special consideration knowing that there's five different housing units or condos. So it's not, every individual is important, but this one, I lean towards it because there's so many different families and or living situations in that space area. Thank you.
Counselor Hanke?
Yeah, just to follow up on the distances. I understand that it might be variable based on speed of road and width of road and all sorts of things. But I guess the follow up question, when when our superintendent says it's variable, is in this circumstance, what would it be? And then set it there. You know, like, what, what would the recommendation for minimum distance from edge of parking lane to edge of driveway be? Because I guess the way this motion is worded, it's just extremely vague for repainting the lines, eliminate a spot. But when you repaint the lines, what does that mean? Because there's no distance on where the next spot is unless you take it by where the lines are right now. And if you do it that way, you don't get an extra spot. Because I don't think three spots can really be consolidated and condensed into four. But maybe three and a half can be shortened into four. And so, you know, I, I would, I'm just going to say, I would have liked to see a little more clarity in this motion because I think it's reasonable, but it's very hard as to what Counselor Ryan said. It's very hard to then place similar, make similar judgments on other requests that are coming. Whereas if you put a distance there, you'd be able to be a little more consistent in your considerations on how to address the issue of visibility.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? We're going to move to the vote. Counselor Ryan?
Aye.
Kathy Shane?
Yes.
Andy Steinberg?
Aye.
Jennifer Taub?
Yes.
Counselor Walker?
Yes.
Patty Angeles?
Aye.
Anna Devlin-Gothier?
Aye.
Counselor Ette?
Aye.
Lynn Greismerzen?
Aye.
Counselor Hanke?
Aye.
Bob Hegner?
Aye.
Counselor Lord?
Aye.
It's unanimous with one counselor absent. We're going to move on to appointments. And the motion in this case is to approve the town manager appointment of Christina Smith to the Conservation Commission effective immediately for a term to expire June 30th, 2028. Is there a second?
Second.
Are there any other questions or comments? Kathy Shane?
Yes, I wouldn't normally do this, but on this particular motion to appoint, I will abstain. And it's not because of the qualifications of the person. I, I think the person is eminently qualified and would be a great member. But I'm very concerned about the process. And since I can't fix the process going backwards, I'm hoping that the process can be better going forward. So the only way I can express this is by abstaining. So I just want to explain my vote when I vote.
Thank you. Jennifer?
May I ask a point of order, please?
Yes.
I thought we were going to hear from T S O first.
Thank you.
Thank you.
T S, we do need to hear from T S O. Andy?
Again, I think that the memorandum is intended to speak for itself. We focused on the qualifications and recognized that the appointment process is vested in the town manager with council approval of the appointment as recommended with the time constraints that are provided in the chart. And as we looked at it, we really did focus as a group on the qualification of the person who is being appointed. And there was one additional issue that the town manager would need to speak to. And that is to make sure that there was no disadvantage by making the appointment effective at this time as far as any pending actions of the commission that we were making the recommendation about. But there was one member of the committee who, I think, would have wanted to have more conversation about process, though that was not included in the report because it was not a part of, it wasn't the reasoning that we were putting forward in making the vote, which was a qualification of the individual appointed. And I know that that member's hand is up and she will speak as she wishes.
Counselor Lord?
I have more to say, but right now I would, we brought up, I voted to get this to the larger council because there was a conversation about if one of the Conservation Committee members is elected, then you no longer have quorum to move the project, to vote on the project because it has to have, I'm learning this, been the original members. So that became a concern. And I thought we were going to discuss that a little bit tonight. So we had more answers about if you, there's, there'll be two new people. If that person gets elected and is off the committee, then the project, there's an issue. So that was one issue. And then I do, we have seen that this has been very problematic. And a lot of people have heard different things. And I do, would like to just mention that if we can find different ways of, I don't know, whether it's transparency, whether it's sharing information, whether it's getting people in the same room to avoid some of the harm and misunderstandings. I would like to be helpful in figuring out a way forward. But my biggest concern in this right moment is if we elect, push this person through and then the election, that other person is, that means the project cannot move forward, as I understood it at our T S O meeting. Thank you.
Paul, would you like to speak to that question that was raised to T S O?
Yes, thank you for the opportunity. So I wrote an email back to the T S O committee that talked, that checked it. There was a concern that was raised and I checked in with our staff conservation agent, Erin Jock. And she confirmed verbally with the Conservation Commission members, all four of them who would be still on, and all were available and confirmed they will attend the December 3rd meeting. In addition, all were available to attend a meeting on December 17th if that became necessary. So, but then I also learned tonight during the meeting that the, this, with the subject of that public hearing, the applicant had withdrawn their application. So that, that issue has been removed from the Conservation Commission's docket.
Sorry I missed that email. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Anna?
I believe that the appropriate way to express displeasure with the process would be to propose changes to the process, not abstaining on a vote to appoint. I would like to know who is responsible for the appointed committee handbook and what the process is for revisions on that document so that we can better channel our feedback and propose changes to the process without harming a supremely qualified candidate for the Conservation Commission. We talk about transparency a lot. And someone in my district meeting on Sunday said something that I am holding with me, which is what does transparency look like when it is, and I can't say this word for the life of me, what does transparency look like when it is operationalized? There we go. And I think that is, that's one of the questions here. And for me, I think that partly it's having this conversation, but partly it's figuring out how to adjust the process and looking at those two questions separately. Because what's on the table right now is an appointment of someone who I, this is no slight on anyone else who has served on the Conservation Commission. This is the most qualified candidate I have ever seen apply for the Conservation Commission. I don't think that we should let frustrations with a separate process reflect on her appointment. And I do think that we need to deal with this process. And so I would love to know about who is the holder of that handbook, whether it be the council or the manager, and what the process for, I think, clarifying the appointment process is.
Anna, that's a very good question. I will look for a response. But my initial observation is, since both the town manager and the council appoint various people to different committees, it probably is a joint responsibility.
We have a policy and then there's a handbook.
For the town manager, then I'll check with that. Okay? Thank you. Jennifer?
Thank you. So it wasn't part of what I was going to say, but I abstain because I think the nominee is qualified. I don't think she's more qualified than the incumbent to the position, who is a wetlands expert who worked for Fish and Wildlife for 38 years. But I will grant they're both very qualified. My concern is, it is with process, but it's also that I think there is a lot of innuendo and even impugning of character, kind of by insinuation going around. And I feel like as a counselor, by remaining silent, I'm concerned that the council is in, being placed in a position of being complicit in allowing the innuendo to go unquestioned. And I, I've said this in T S O, but I think any process in which the response can be when a candidate asks why they're, when a candidate is told they will not be reappointed and they will not be interviewed, and they're told, they ask why. And if the response can be, I don't have to provide a reason. And if the response can be, I don't have to provide a reason. And again, this is process, but that process is inherently flawed. That should never be able to be a response. I was concerned when I frankly read the responses that were being sent to members of the public who wrote into the council that in the, in the response, it was said that the, I actually wrote it down. It said, I'm sorry. It was written to members of the community, please understand that my sole motivation was to choose the best candidate and more important to ensure the commission and its members function in a manner consistent with the town's standards and values and best protects the town's interest. Well, there's a lot of innuendo there implying that the person who was reapplying was not acting in a manner consistent with the town's standards and values. And if that is the case, then why was he asked to remain on the commission for four months past the date that his term ended? And as far as I know, he was never told during the course of his term that there was any issue with the way that he was conducting himself. So I was very concerned to read that. And I didn't, I didn't feel like I could personally, did not want to be in a position where I was somehow okay with that being written. And in a more general sense, and I know this has been discussed before, but you know, how do we, I'm always trying to go out and encourage residents to apply for vacancies on town, council and town manager appointed commissions and boards. And it's very hard to do that when, you know, it just feels they can be treated in a pretty capricious manner and actually, you know, have their characters impugned when they've just been working very hard. So that's my personal statement.
Thank you. Andy.
Yeah, this time I'm speaking as an individual counselor, but not as chair of the committee because it's something not discussed in the committee. The question came up about the committee handbook. And I can tell you that in a former lifetime, I voted yes on the adoption of the handbook for, as a select board member. It was adopted by the select board. But what we have to understand is that the select board technically under a town meeting form of government is actually the executive branch and not the legislative branch. So it is a very difficult question with the change in our form of government is to where revisions could come from. But I thought I'd give you that background. Thank you.
I appreciate that very much. Counselor Hanke.
The question in front of us is whether to approve the town manager appointment. He has appointed someone who is eminently qualified as Anna stated. This person teaches wetlands bylaw compliance to others in this state. No one is entitled to a seat for however long they want. We seeking reelection must earn that seat in reelection. Just because I sit here now doesn't mean I get to automatically sit here in January. We have seen this issue pop up with requests for reappointments when terms have ended in the planning board, in the ZBA, in the finance committee, in how we've appointed people. But a term ended. The term ended. And the application was a new application. And the person manager chose to appoint was someone else. And that person is eminently qualified. And I'm going to be voting to appoint Christina Smith, who is well more qualified and wonderfully qualified and someone I would definitely want on our Conservation Commission interpreting wetlands bylaws when Christina interprets it and helps teach others how to interpret it. Yeah.
Are there any other questions or comments? We're moving to a vote. Kathy Shane.
Abstain.
Andy Steinberg.
Aye.
Jennifer Taub.
Abstain.
Counselor Walker.
Abstain.
Pat DeAngelis.
Aye.
Anna Devlin-Gothier.
Aye.
Counselor Ette. Lynn Griesmer is an aye. Counselor Hanke.
Aye.
Bob Hegner.
Aye.
Counselor Lord.
Abstain.
Counselor Ryan.
Aye.
The vote passes eight in favor, four abstentions and one absent. Thank you. We're going to move on. We've approved the minutes. I'm sorry, I've skipped over committee and liaison reports. BCG, the only thing I have to mention there is that we in fact have confirmed November 13th, 2025 at noon for the next meeting of BCG. Community Resources Committee, Jennifer Taub.
So we'll be discussing at the meeting on Thursday, the housing production plan and if there's, I guess, next items that carry over for next year. And if there's any update on the state's solar regulations. And then we might have the item that was referred tonight to CRC.
Any questions or comments there? Moving to the Elementary School Building Committee, Kathy.
We met last Friday and we resolved the playground surface issue. Thanks to the heroic efforts of Bob Parent, we got warranties of five years on the surface that we were concerned might fail us. So we're moving forward. That was the main issue that we were funding. And Bob already spoke to this, but Paul already spoke to us, the committee, but what Bob did for us, including contacting Norway and Sweden, which helped move the needle here in the United States, that this is the way they do it in other countries. Why can't we do it here? It was terrific because we could resolve an issue. We meet again on, in a month. And the other issue that we, it's not an issue we had to make a decision on. The furniture costs for the building are coming in higher than we knew several years ago, partly because the production and construction cost with tariffs is higher. And MSBA has already recognized this with a higher furniture allowance going forward, but it won't go backwards to us. So fortunately, we have a large contingency and it's easy to absorb within the contingency, including contingency for the furniture.
Thank you. Finance Committee, Kathy Shane.
So the Finance Committee met last week and we have a report. And because it didn't come up tonight, the report was around the middle school building roof. And we are recommending approval of that debt authorization. And I'll do a slight revision of the report since we didn't address it tonight. The one issue that came up with us is the MSBA is voting on their share and approval of them doing the 62% of the grant. They're meeting on October 28th. And we didn't want to vote on it until we secured that money. So if it comes up, Lynn, on November 3rd, I will just revise it because we had a motion that the councils should wait to vote. And since we didn't consider it tonight, we are waiting to vote. But there is a report that is positive. So if we can at least put that in the packet, it will send a signal to MSBA that there is support of this. Two other towns have already voted yes. The only other thing to note is that we're not meeting tomorrow. We're meeting on the 28th. And it will be the audit report and two issues that we've asked about. When does the elementary school debt exclusion, when will it show up in the taxpayers, tax, taxes? And an update on the cash flow for the town for the Jones, you know, on, on what the debt financing for that is. So two, us trying to figure out what our capital costs are going forward.
I do have a question for finance, and that is, did you discuss or was there any allusion to the idea that we might, as a town and along with the other three towns, use some level of reserves so that we can bring the auditorium roof in as well? Now, that would require the town manager to submit a financial order.
We, we did not discuss it per se. I raised it here at the council meeting before that and spoke to it again, that the auditorium is not covered. And that when we do free cash, we should be considering that piece. We, I, I've mentioned this to the superintendent and she is aware that they need to ask for the money, you know, make a proposal to us. So that I don't believe has been received yet either. But they do have an estimate of what it would cost. So we didn't have a formal discussion because there wasn't really anything to discuss. We don't know, we don't know what amount of money we're talking about, including closing out the year. We, we don't have those numbers yet.
Thank you. Counselor Hanke.
Yeah, I just wanted to add that the finance director for the school committee, when asked, did say something about it might save a little bit of money to do it all at once, but didn't attach any numbers to anything. But again, it's, it's not a town-owned building. So four towns would need to come to that agreement.
Yep, thank you. We're going on GOL, Anna.
Y'all are sending us too much stuff. Okay, so a couple of things. First off, GOL is, is not meeting tomorrow. We've got a staff, so we will be meeting on the 28th. At that meeting, we will be joined by Chief Ting and we will be discussing the Public Irration and Defecation Bylaw. So excited. We will also be discussing proposed changes to the public ways policy and the charge for the Transportation Advisory Commission. We are, it's looking like we'll have two proclamations, healthcare for all and small business Saturday. And then we are working on our vacancies that we're trying to fill. Couple of things that they, that pertain to the council. GOL will be beginning very soon at our next meeting, discussion of the town manager goals. I would encourage you to take a moment and look at our 2025 goals. Please notice how there are too many of them and how we should have fewer of them in order to get them all done in the next year. So please note your own personal opinions on those goals as to whether they have been completed or not and whether they should be carried over into the coming term or not. I will say that GOL is not starting. This year, GOL will not be starting from a place of all the goals are carried over until they're not. We are starting at a place of there are no goals until you tell us what you want to see on the list. So please edit selectively so that we can get a reasonable number of goals on for 2026. The other thing that GOL will be looking at is we've noticed that GOL often is tasked with doing legal review for bylaws and measures that come to GOL. That often leads to questions for the initial referring committee. And so GOL, under our, under our charge, is able to look at and review committee charges. Part of that, we are currently trying, hang on, let me back up. In that, under that purview, there we go. GOL is talking about making it so that the initial committees, the, the committee that's dealing with substantive review of content would be the one to receive the feedback from legal review instead of GOL so that we don't have to continue this back and forth. It should be a relatively simple language tweak, but may include that simple language tweak in every single committee charge because it needs to go into every single committee charge. So we're hoping to deal with that as well. But hopefully that will cut down on the number of headaches for everybody involved in this process. So that's what's coming up for, for GOL. Please look at the goals. Thank you.
So Anna, we're not meeting tomorrow?
No, ma'am. We'll be meeting on the 28th.
Okay. Okay, I thought we had agreed to that. Anyway, Jones Library Building, Paul, you have an update?
Yeah, there was a meeting, a really brief meeting about a week ago that where invoices were approved and some images were shown about the, the construction that's moving forward. So the project is moving forward on schedule and on budget.
And Counselor Ryan, have you had a chance to attend the meetings?
Yes, I have. The meeting was on October 14th. The committee's meeting on a monthly basis. The next meeting is November 10th.
Okay. And I, so TSO, Andy.
I don't have to cover topics already discussed and voted on. I do, we are working on several issues to try and see what we can conclude of the things that are pending. And there were several issues that have arisen over the time. One of the courses, the Transportation Parking Commission, which we're working with GOL to try and separate out our respective roles in the process. And in order to make the, keep the deadline moving, we scheduled an extra meeting for this week on Thursday just to talk about the public ways policy. It's a one, one item meeting, which we are capping at an hour, but it's at 10 o'clock at our usual time on Thursday morning of the, just this week. And the, my, my one comment after today's meeting is, is that there are two things to reflect on in what we've been working on in the committee. One was the Yamity Street discussion that we had earlier. Both Chief Ting and Superintendent Moore came to our meeting to talk about what was needed. And the way that we're proposing the structure of the commission is that Police Department and TPW and Planning would be all represented on the committee and that we would also have counselor members chosen by the council or recommended by the council to the town manager as we do for other things of a similar nature. And we're looking for mostly is a more efficient process. The one thing that had been difficult for us, and we did a reversal of our original intended recommendation at the last meeting, which is about utility hearings or poll hearings, as they're sometimes called. And I thought that the discussion tonight sort of exemplified why we made the decision that we made to recommend that the hearings remain within the council. And because the state statute requires that the council be the maker of the decision and therefore it would be getting a report on a, on a hearing, but it wouldn't be conducting the hearing. The hearings are really very brief, an opportunity to ask questions. And it seems much more efficient. So the TSO did vote at the last meeting on that one particular issue to suggest that hearings on that issue remain within the council itself. So I think that that was principally where we're at on, on that. We're trying to get it done so that we can get two readings and have it completed. And this council, and as you indicated in the report, the way is taller. We finally, Paul has really been in a struggle to find a consultant to assist with the process of developing an RFP. And he has now been successful. And it was a very creative and good choice. And we're looking for, moving forward, it will be in the carryover because there's no way that it's going to be completed in time. Obviously, the RFP process is going to take into the new year. The other thing that I wanted to mention, because there's two counselors here who are involved, we do want to talk about the lighting policy that was in the last carryover memo, get an update on what is happening with it. And then make sure that the lighting policy remains alive and into the. And then make sure that the lighting policy remains alive and into the carryover memo to the next council. And I'll separately be communicating with those two counselors. Thank you.
Are there any liaison reports? Hala?
Just a quick heads up that the CSSJC will be presenting and be with us on our next meeting, November 3rd. They're looking to have the slides in our packets ahead of time. And if timing, you know, permits, they'll be there. And I'm just grateful and excited to have them come to our meeting next meeting. Thanks.
Thank you. And Hala and I have been meeting with the chairs, the co-chairs of that committee in preparation for their joining us. Any other liaison reports? Then we're going to, we've done minutes, Town Manager's Report, Paul?
Thank you, Lynn. So it's a red letter day for us today as Sean McGonagall started his duties as our Finance Director, coming back for a second appearance, I guess. And he came in, he's jumped in with both feet. He is preparing for the Finance Committee meeting next week for talking about the audit. He's preparing, he's working on the Financial Indicators Report along with other staff. He's been meeting with staff. He's, we're looking at candidates for the Comptroller position. He will, and then we're talking about the schools, the school roof. We talked a little bit about that. Talked about the Capitol projects and about the library, everything that Kathy already mentioned. So he's aware of all those issues. He's starting to work, he's got a list as long as my arm of things to do and we're trying to prioritize those things that are most important. He's very efficient in his work, so I'm confident that this will make a big difference in our financial discussions. He will be joining me on November 14th for the Cup of Joe. So this will be after the Financial Indicators. He'll give opportunity for anybody who would like to have conversations with him informally, but in front of the press, usually the press shows up to join him. Also, just you, some of you have met the Director of Senior Services, Lisa Bruschetta. She was, joined me at the last Cup of Joe at Black Sheep and it was a very good turnout, really rich discussion. And she's been here about a month now and really getting the lay of the land and starting to figure out what's going on and starting her leadership role there. So I'm excited to have her as well. We're nearing, I'm hoping to have a Planning Director appointment to you in the not-too-distant future. I'm pretty optimistic about where this one is going. So that will conclude the sort of senior management appointments that we'll have for the time being. We are, we have been overwhelmed with applications to serve on a committee for the Cherrywood Hill Working Group and one of the largest responses ever. So I'll be announcing those appointments. So that's an advisory group to the town manager, so it won't go to the council for approval. There, we also are looking for a membership on the Black Reparations Committee, the Cable TV Advisory Committee, and the DPW Building Committee will be doing interviews for the DPW Building Committee next, so that will, hopefully, hopefully that will get through the process in mid, mid-November or sometime around there. Fire Department, there's a lot going on, Fire Department right now. On October 31st, there'll be the retirement ceremony for Assistant Chief Olmsted after many years of service to the town. At the North Fire Station, you're all welcome. It goes from 2:00 to 4:00. And then the following Monday at 8:00 AM at the North Fire Station, we will be swearing in the new Assistant Chief, Steve Chandler. And there will be some additional firefighters who will be sworn in at the same time. And so we're really excited about all the, the leadership team that is now in place under Chief Stromgren. And the, the, there's, there's more work to be done as, as there's this trickle after you appoint an Assistant Chief, then that captain's seat becomes vacant, then they, there's a process that, that's part of the union contract in terms of appointing the next captain and then so on. The, there's also, speaking of staffing, so I gave a little anecdote in the Town Manager Report, I hope you'll take a minute to read about the call. The Call firefighter who retired when, when she hit her 65th birthday. It's just a, it was really an ode to public service, to the Fire Department, to service as a Call firefighter for 39 years that she served. And I'm hoping that she gets a little more press from the Gazette because I think that is a remarkable level of service. And she, she, she was sad to have to retire because that's a mandatory retirement age. So it's just a, I just put her words indirectly for what she, what she felt. And also, we have the, we have, we're also looking for Call firefighters. And the last thing is, we have two fire trucks that are about to be delivered. The, the Fire Chief and Assistant Chief put hands on these trucks. They exist, they're in, they're in the state. One, we think will be, well, we know exactly where they are, but one will be, we think will be delivered next week. The other is, we've promised Santa that he would have a new ladder truck for Mary Maple. So they're really pushing to get that second truck here. So that will put us in really good stead in terms of equipment. Our staff, our leadership is set, staffing is, is pretty, is pretty good. There's, there's one or two vacancies, but there's a process. We've been pretty aggressive about filling those seats. So I think, I'm feeling good about the Fire Department right now. They, of course, we don't know what's going to happen with Hadley's reduction. We don't think there'll be much of a impact on our Fire Department. But it's, it's because they will be reducing their fire service to, I think, one person on duty at night from 7:00 to 7:00. But they're keeping an eye. We're in good communication with the acting town manager, who's also the police chief in Hadley. What else? The, oh, Board of Health is coming up with something that's, that's going to get attention. It's called nicotine-free generation, where anybody born after January 1st, 2005 will not be able to, will not legally be able to purchase tobacco products of any sort. It's something that's sort of, that a number of communities have adopted. Our Board of Health is now reviewing it. There'll be a public hearing. I think there'll be a lot of, the convenience store industry tends to be pretty aggressive against it, but I think it's a little bit below the radar and, but I, it's the latest initiative under public health in order to reduce access to nicotine, which is very harmful. It's been proven over and over again. The, we, as Lynn mentioned, we do have some ribbon cuttings coming up. It's sort of in a busy time of year. We have the ribbon cutting for the North Common, which is really exciting. That's on Wednesday. Centennial Water Treatment Facility, which is the, the week after that, a major facility for us, $21 million facility that's really going to stabilize our water supply, give us an additional source, be state-of-the-art in terms of treating water, really important. Doesn't get the glory, it's, it's sort of hidden away up in Pelham, but I hope you'll make some time to come to that. Library is, is moving forward. In the Town Manager Report, there is the latest report from the trust, from the Capital Campaign on where they are on their fundraising. If you have questions on that, you can direct it to me or to the Capital Campaign. And then the school, there are some great photos from the school. The, the elementary school building company has been running really well, handling all the issues. I think, you know, the one, Friday meeting, it, we got an email at 11:35 before 12:30 meeting where the company finally said, we will give you a five-year warranty on the construction, on the, on the product and on the installation, which was the, that was the barrier for me. Like I didn't want to buy something, had a one-year guarantee. So I think, we still don't know if this product will survive, but we've got five years with it. So that's, that's a good thing. So, and so that's pretty much everything going on. I do not have, I will be submitting my self-evaluation for the performance review in the morning. I was waiting for one thing, it came in while we were in this meeting, so I have to add that to it, to it, and that'll be finished and ready to go. So I'll be submitting it to you in the morning. Ready for any questions?
Questions from the council. Councilor Ryan?
So not a question actually, but just an observation of which Paul has already touched on a number of things. But I think we all should take some pride and share with our constituents. In his report, you saw a series of photographs celebrating a number of important accomplishments on a whole host of levels, starting first of all with public space being renovated in the downtown, the North Common, with a recreation, with the reoriented track. And now we have two fields. We've learned that there's sufficient funds also to make it possible that the second field will have the adequate drainage and will be able to be functioning as a, a field equal to the one that's next to it. So you have a picture of the, the library is well along on its way. You have the Centennial Water Treatment Plant, thinking of core infrastructure. And then, of course, the elementary school, which is, is, is moving along and will be finished soon. And we also threw in two fire trucks and Santa. But the point is that we have accomplished an extraordinary amount in the last few years that affect the quality of life, not only today, but for the future. And I hope you will share that with your constituents. Many of us are out now knocking on doors, but however you do it, I think we should be very proud, proud of our management and proud of what we've been trying to do for this community today and in the future.
Can I just add to that as well? Like the roads, I know we went through a rough couple of weeks where there seemed to be paving everywhere, there was traffic everywhere. I talked to a facilities director manager at Amherst College and I was, I was complaining about, why are they always showing, because we don't control this? And he says, there's three entities that you don't control. When they show up, you say yes. And it's elevator, elevator repair people, it's fire alarm people, and it's paving companies. When there's, and they say, I'm coming tomorrow, you say yes. You don't say, come back, because you don't know if they will. So we said yes. We had multiple companies, they were, and it was disruptive to our drivers, to our neighbors, Pelcher Town, others. The roads are paved, they're pretty close to being finished. The road, the worst roads are being addressed. Downtown, it, it looks really nice. It's the, you know, the handicapped, the, the crosswalks are, are, you don't go dip down to cross the road and then come up, they're level. So when you're, I talked to a woman this morning who's in a wheelchair, who's, which the thing she said to me was like, it makes you realize how much more we have to do. Because she was going through the center of town, through the North Common with her dog. She was very excited, but, and she says, but then when I go down towards M&amp;T Bank, then, I said, yep, we've got a lot more to do. It's just a piece. But this is an important piece. The one last thing you'll see is that the work in the center of town is completed for this year. Next spring, they'll come back and they'll do the, the stamping on the crosswalks that we've done. The Amity Street Crosswalk is the one to the, to Jones Library is the one we use as a model. So it'll be stamped, so it looks like a crosswalk and a, it's not a different material, it just looks like a different material. So credit to the DPW, their crew, their, their engineers were out managing all of these prod, projects at the same time. And they were struck, they were struck by how many things were happening at the same time and, but mostly apologies to our, our, our community and thanks for your patience.
George, you have your hand up? Are there any other questions or comments for the town manager? Let me just mention two things. I sent you during this last week, the timeline for the Town Manager's Evaluation Report, I mean, evaluation. I just want to remind you that you will receive all of the, all of the information you need by Thurs, by Friday, October 31st, at the end of the day, by the end of the day. And I am asking that you have it all back to me, your evaluations, in other words, by the following Friday, November 7th at 5:00. That's a one-week turnaround. It therefore gives me basically about a little over a week to kind of condense it all and come up with a plan. I did ask if anybody had a problem with that, to let me know, and I've heard from one counselor. The other thing I want to mention is the Kana Gisaki visit. And that is, they will arrive on Thursday, October 30th. The one event that we will have here in this room is very brief welcoming. More importantly, what, this is when they meet their host families. And they will spend the next two days with them. And there will be a farewell dinner on Saturday, November 1st at 6:00 at one of the UMass Dining Halls, and you're invited to both of those. And I will be sending something out to see who will be available. The agenda for our next meeting is packed, but a lot of it we addressed today. And I am open for questions and/or regular council comments. Yes, Pat?
Thank you. You know, I've been sitting here over the years, listening to both supportive comments by counselors and residents and staff and attacking comments by residents, by counselors, including myself, I have attacked, and staff. And it got me thinking about that old phrase, what's good for the goose is good for the gander. So as a community, all of us, town counselors, town staff and residents need to look at our own behavior towards the volunteers on our committees and commissions. We need to turn the mirror on ourselves. Are we offering critique or are we attacking because we're angry? Each of us must, needs to look at our goal. Is it to repair or to harm? And each of us must require of ourselves the behavior we require from others. So yeah, what's good for the goose has got to be good for the gander. And I wish as a community, we would take that to the heart.
Thank you. Are there any other questions, comments? Seeing none, I'm making a motion to adjourn and seek a second.
Shane seconds.
We'll move immediately to a vote. Andy Steinberg?
Yes.
Jennifer Taub?
Yes.
Counselor Walker?
Yes.
Patty Angeles?
Aye.
Anna Devlin-Gothier?
Aye.
Counselor Ette?
Aye.
Lynn Griesmer is an aye. Counselor Hanke?
Aye.
Bob Hegner?
Aye.
Counselor Lord?
Aye.
Pam Rooney?
Absent.
I'm sorry, she's absent.
She's very quiet.
She's very quiet. Counselor Ryan?
Aye.
And Kathy Shane?
Yes.
It's unanimous, we're adjourned. It is 10:17.